Your left leg is a little bit more dead center, it's right in the middle. Your right leg is a little bit rotated away from midline, so your patella looks like it's facing way from the middle of your body, different from the left side. As we come up your body from there, the next asymmetry that I see that stands out is in your hands. The left side in your hands, it's a little bit higher here, and the right side hangs a little bit lower. And you can see the corollary to that, where your shoulder here on the left side is a little bit higher than your right side, where your shoulder's a little bit lower. And then up into your head and cranium, there's a little bit of a right side bend. In your skull, your eye looks a little bit lower, and your earlobe looks a little bit lower on the right side. So that concludes the visual analysis part. We'll move over to the table, and you'll just lay on your back with your head at this end of the table, and your feet just off the edge of the other end.
One of the things that's important as we work with people, as they change postures, and what their habits go into, that we like to give them support. What is their bed like? But in this particular case, what creates ease in their body as we're evaluating for their alignment?
Looking at your leg length here, Vicky, and it's a little bit shorter on the right side.
Okay.
Check the mobility, your left, your right leg. It's a little bit tighter over on the left. Here, I'll test your sacroiliac joints for their motion.
Okay.
Compare them left to right. How does it feel to you in here?
It feels a bit tighter on the right, to me.
It feels tighter on the right to me also. This part addresses the viscera, motion of your ribs on your stomach and spleen on the left versus your liver on the right, and it's also a little tighter on the right. How does that feel to you, left to right?
It's just a little sore. But I don't feel the tightness on the right side that you mentioned.
Pressure still okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Does one side feel tighter to you than the other?
The right, it's tighter. It's good.
Stretch this side out a little bit. Tell me if you get uncomfortable in any way. It's a slow stretching out process, very similar to yoga in that way. So how are you feeling now from the beginning of the session? Do you feel any different?
I do, I feel there's less tension in my low back. I feel like my energy's more scattered and more rated, I guess I'd say.
You brought to a good start.
So do I.
Bruce, that kind of struck me, that it started as sort of nonspecific complaints, and yet you were tracking down where the problem areas were. At the end of this, do you give the patient exercises or therapies or an alternative even to the way of getting out of bed in the morning? Is that kind of what you're about?
Yeah, I try to follow up the manipulation part in the office with modifying what you're doing outside of the office. So everything from adjusting the ergonomics at your computer and at your desk space, your sleeping, and your workouts. Those are probably the top three areas that I try to focus on to help people out, so they can help themselves out.
Again, I know it's very easy to sort of drop out of good health habits. A person can be ill, or they can have a month of stress, and suddenly they're doing things differently. Do you need to identify some of those things as well in your patients, and perhaps get them back on track?
Oh yeah. Frequently they'll come in, and again, the chairs that we choose. You know, maybe they've retired and they're working a little bit more with computers, but the things that they choose gets them into the possibility of slouch type posture.
Can't you just hear your mother stand up straight?
Yeah.
You wondered about that, but I can see that happening. And often, people don't change the things they need to change. "Oh, I can manipulate my computer just fine, I don't need those rests for my wrists."
Yeah. So we help them with all of that. We even go to their homes and see what their stations are like, how can we give them hints, and be helpful with that.
I think that's really important, because you could see if they have placed, for example, small kitchen appliances at the wrong level, and made their life difficult unnecessarily.
Yeah.
Checking how their bed system is. We need to take a short break, so when we come back, we will continue our discussion of integrative manual therapy and aging. We'll be right back.
The Los Angeles Department of Water and Power wants to give you up to seven pre-shaped trees, just for completing a workshop, either online or in the neighborhood. The Trees for a Green L.A. program offers LADWP residents over 40 different varieties of pre-shaped trees. Trees benefit the environment, save energy, and add beauty. Get your trees by participating in an online workshop by logging on to ladwp.com/trees, or call 1-800-GREEN-L-A.
As kids, it's really important that we learn the proper way to cross a street. First, you have to stop at the curve, then look both ways to make sure there are no cars. If you see one, wait for it to pass, and when it's clear, you can cross. As kids, sometimes you have to set an example. Look both ways before you cross, cars can't see you.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. Our topic today, integrative manual therapy and aging. Our guests are Bruce Schoenfeld, who practices the art and science of hands-on manipulation for therapeutic purposes, and Gail Wetzler, a physical therapist who heads up the Wetzler Integrated Physical Therapy Center in Newport Beach. Thank you again, Bruce and Gail, for joining us. You know, I really do find this fascinating, because it expands the notion of wellness. It's not just when things are, when the wheels are falling off. You are actually taking proactive steps to help get rid of some of the stresses and strains of life. Yes?
Yes. And I'd like to say that one of the key things to help people is that they listen to their body, and it shares so much with them. If they really listen deep inside to what is happening, then they can take some direction with that. And to keep it simple, when we talk about ergonomics and body mechanics and posturing, and really believe in yourself and inner knowing, and you can change. There's just such an old adage, as you age, that the posturing goes and the deformation occurs. I've worked with so many people with such a wonderful attitude, and the body can recreate those cells to make change in their structure as well.
Bruce, would you agree with me that this is a good topic to at least think about, so that you can be paying attention to those signals that your body is giving you all the time?
Yeah, it's a great topic. Unfortunately, no one ever educates us how to listen to our body when we're doing our early schooling. So a lot of the transition that Gail and I and people like us help people make is, you stop suppressing the pain signals, and you start listening to them, or the signs of discomfort. And you try to figure out when your body is starting to get in a little bit of trouble as early as possible, so that if you're at a movie, you get up and go in the back and stand up and stretch, instead of just staying in your seat and hurting your low back, for example.
Right, and I can see that on airplane travel, or any long stretch. Gail, for people to get in contact with you, we have some graphics here. If you could help us, is there a website we can visit, and telephone numbers, please?
There is. My practice is in Newport Beach, California, and I see from pediatrics to geriatrics and sports, I'm an athletic trainer as well as a physical therapist, so see quite a few people in helping them with all walks of life.
Okay, and we have your number on the screen there.
Yes, and my number is 949-851-8228, and the website is listed there to do and see.
And Bruce, for people to contact you in Santa Monica, let's hit these graphics up, if you give us the phone number. Good number.
It's a great number. And my website is advancedrollthing.com. And I also do a lot of work with people who have unresolved scar tissues. So whether it's post-C-section or hysterectomy, sometimes the layers just become restricted, and I help redifferentiate them, and it's a very helpful thing.
Well, Bruce, let me focus on that for a second, because so many of our, in our audience are actually caregivers, and they may have noticed something in the person they're caring for that's not right. You know, their instincts are troubling them. Do you actually see caregivers as well, so you can help in case there's a team effort going on to help a senior?
Yeah, people will come in with their significant other, or their caretaker, and as much as I can, I'm sure Gail does the same thing, we try to empower people to take care of themselves, improve their ergonomics and leverage in their activities of daily life, and just pass the information on versus just hanging on to it ourselves.
Right. Gail, let's talk about balance issues, because so many elderly people, that's when the crisis comes, they've fallen. What are some of the steps people can do to sort of keep that away from them, to help them navigate life, if you will?
One of the key things is keeping their flexibility. Keeping their flexibility, the hydration that it comes from hands-on therapy, but also exercise and strength and lengthening. Keeping their strength, keeping their coordination through means that are exercise-related. Also, teaming up, working, like you said, with a caretaker. We get the caretaker involved with their therapy. And what is it that they can do to help with hands-on work, keeping the range of motion going, and working with stabilizing their balance through those means.
You know, you guys were gracious enough to give us a list of like, the top 10, 11, 12. And let's go through some of these things, so people can figure it out. Of course, the first one got me right away. Clothing. Wallet in the back pocket. Now, people really do throw themselves out of alignment sitting on the wallet, don't they?
They really do. Especially if you have a big wallet, it just puts an asymmetrical twist through your pelvis and your sacrum, and it's not part of the solution.
Okay, number two, tight underwire bras. But they're so constrictive?
So constrictive, and it affects their breathing pattern, affects their breathing pattern in such a way.
You notice, Bruce, I didn't ask you this question.
But your body, when you feel that, and you don't breathe as well, you actually form around it. You go into the formation of what that tightness is. You don't want to stretch from it, so that's there, and it's a very high point.
I watch this in airports all the time. People are loading themselves up with fanny packs, and they pile junk in, and you just know they're carrying an extra five pounds on one hip. There's trouble there. And these backpacks for children.
For children.
Children hurting themselves.
Yeah, we've even gone as far as physical therapy to, which later you'll see in regard to pushing carts, but even with kids, we recommend that they start loading up those small pieces of luggage, if they have so many books, starting with junior high and high school.
Do they ever?
So we get those involved.
Basic stuff, shoes and socks. People often don't buy the correct kind of shoes, either for their activities or for their condition in life. They're really, you know, wearing $2, you know, dime store tennis shoes when they need support.
Yeah. If you want to go out and wear shoes that look nice and aren't as comfortable, do that. But there's also a lot to be said for being in a shoe that has a really supportive, neutral sole, that is flexible and absorbs impact, and is just part of decompressing your body.
Well, that leads us to something around the households. People are forever just putting on socks and walking on bare floors, guaranteed to slip. Floors, showers, rugs and floor mats, these are things where people can get those, at the top of the show, I called it a sprain, you sprained your ankle. Those are some of the things that actually happen to people.
Yeah, and just like we say, trying to look for that ahead of time, and keeping, creating ease in the environment, and create the environment, do the rugs need to be taped down, do they need to be taken away?
Taken away, yes.
Taken away.
And then, of course, those assistive devices, a handrail by the toilet. Probably a good idea as you are advanced in age.
Yeah, just like good sitting applies to your desk, if you're sitting in a toilet that is really very low, and you have a low back problem, you may want to put some elevation on the seat, just to increase leverage in a way that's good for you.
You know, in the course of doing this show, we have had conversations about how difficult it is for older people to get socks on, for goodness sake. And they sometimes have to be taught how to do that. So now, some things for general well-being. Use push carts, not hand carts, that speaks for itself. Now, what do you mean by cross-training, stairs and sitting? You mean to stay active even as you're doing those things?
Yeah. You want to basically give your body variation in terms of how you use it, and that increases the hydration and mobility. So whatever your workout is, try to do something else, which is going to move different tissues and work your body in a different way.
Right, I see. So it's not, don't confine yourself to just one thing. Unfortunately, it looks like our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guests, Bruce Schoenfeld and Gail Wetzler. And now, it's time for our feature on Aging in L.A., Senior Stat Shots, where we look at statistics that pertain to senior citizens. Today's Senior Stat Shots relate to the issues that we have discussed on today's program. What are the benefits of integrative manual therapy? Well, first, often people feel lighter and more energetic. Some people will actually grow taller as rotations in the body begin to unwind. People often appear slimmer and feel more balanced. Chronic aches and pains are reduced and often alleviated. And movement feels more fluid and flexible. As we begin to view the world from a more stable and balanced structure, we gain self-confidence, and the environment around us appears less threatening. As our body becomes more flexible and open, so does our mind, and we approach life from a less rigid standpoint. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View, Channel 35, so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well-informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life, and also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. Now, we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. So please, give us a call. The number's there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, and we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View, Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching, and we'll see you next time.
Volki item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Thank you to council members Wezar, Corret, Laban, Parks, Wesson, and Zine. We inform of each three other members. Mr. Smith is excused today, but we otherwise respect everybody else. So Mr. Alakon, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Han, Mr. Krikorian, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl, if you'd please join us. Thank you.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, the 27th of October, 2010. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chamber, room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we also come back to the Valley each, every other Friday of the month in our Van Nuys City Council Chambers. Want to welcome all our guests that are here in council chambers here at City Hall, as well as those who are viewing us remotely from our facilities in Van Nuys and San Pedro City Halls. We're also available through the internet at lacity.org, where we stream live council meetings, and we archive all of our past footage of council meetings. We're also available through the city's cable system, through Channel 35, and that is broadcast live and rebroadcast each evening. Want to thank those council members who are here pursuant to council rules on time. It is about 10:04, and council members Wezar, Corret, Laban, Parks, Rosendahl, Wesson, and Zine are here. We are awaiting two more members to constitute a quorum. Mr. Smith is excused today, but beyond that, we are awaiting the following council members. Councilmember Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Krikorian, Perry, and Reyes are late, if they will please make their way down as soon as possible. In the meantime, we have our agendas available in the back. Those are made available to the public 72 hours in advance, and all the supporting material that is made available to council members is also available to the public, either through the city clerk's office, or also online at lacity.org, and you can click on any of the agenda items and see the supporting materials for them. All items are divided into those items that have already had a public hearing in committee and those that have not yet. If they've already had a public hearing in committee, it requires a council member to move to reopen that public hearing to hear cards in the public. But any item that has not yet had a public hearing will trigger a public hearing if there's a card submitted by the public. And those cards are available here, as well as in Van Nuys and in San Pedro. We also have a section of the meeting called General Public Comment, four items, not on today's agenda, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. We are waiting one more council member. The council members Reyes, Perry, Krikorian, Han, and Alakon are still outstanding, so as soon as we get one of them, we will begin the meeting. Thank you for your patience while we await those council members. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Hello. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll. Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Wezar, Corret, Krikorian, Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Wezar moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Krikorian moves, and Mr. Laban seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. Colleagues, if we can turn your attention to the agenda, we're going to go through the agenda now, and if I can ask folks to wrap up their conversations, please. Shhh. Thank you. First items, please.
Item number one is a PCN in Council District 14 that is known as for a public hearing. A recommendation is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay, we do have a card in on that, so we'll call that special for card from the public. Next items? Next items?
Items 2 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 13 has been submitted and distributed to council.
Okay. Two special for Mr. Zine. Other specials, colleagues? Mr. Weezer?
Sorry? 11, 12, and 13?
11, 12, and 13 for Mr. Weezer. Other specials, colleagues? We're on 2 through 14. Seeing no other special items, we'll take the rest on consent. Ms. Han is here. If we can check her in. And please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 15 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
If there's no objection to considering those, we will have those before us. Mr. Corretts?
Does that include 25?
25, yes.
I would just ask to go forthwith, not that we prefer this session.
I'll call 24 special. Other specials? Do we have cards on any of these? Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we do. We have cards on items 19, 20, 23, and 24.
Okay. We'll close the public hearings on the other ones, and if nobody else wishes to call the balance special, let's take of the balance, please. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 26 through 27 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold those on the desk. Unless, Mr. Parks, do you want to move any of the--
The issue on 26, if it meets the concurrence of CD 11 and 5, that could go in open session because it's asking for an appeal right. The other one is a significant amount of money.
Is there any objection on 26?
Mr. Corretts?
Mr. Corretts? Mr. Corretts, are we okay moving 26 in open session?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and read that proposal then. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. City -- or, Mr. President, it'd probably be more appropriate to have that one actually discussed in closed session, so that council at least gets a briefing on the matter.
Okay. The recommendation by our city attorney to do that, we'll go ahead and defer to the city attorney this time, but that's his one shit for the week. We will call that special for closed session, and we did want to move, per Mr. Corretts' desire, 25 forthwith, please. We do have a special meeting, but we will call that later. We have a request to take 24 out of order before public comment, and we'll come back for public comment, and so like to invite on item 24. Colleagues, we have a report before us. As you see, many of the guests that are in council chambers today are representatives of and members of Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. They come here each year for an access City Hall Day to lobby and to educate and to inform the people of Los Angeles and the elected representatives that are here. A number of us addressed them about an hour ago, the mayor, the city controller, city attorney, and myself, but they are here and have given us a report which has been distributed for everybody that gives some great detail, not only in the city's economic conditions and possible priorities, but also your own council districts' analysis, which really drives into some of the numbers in your individual neighborhoods and council districts. So I'd like to invite the chamber forward to the table to give a presentation on this, and then we will have a discussion based on the items that are before us, but you can go ahead and come to the center table if you'd like. Matt Toledo, who's the chair of the board--
Are you the chairman of the board today?
Yeah, Chair of Board, Dana Willoughby, Gary Tobin--
Who'd you give it to?
And Brad Kemp, who is the Director of Regional Research at Beacon Economics, who are responsible for that. Mr. Laban, did you want to say something before they began the presentation?
Well, I just was checking on the distribution of the report that you mentioned, which the clerk hasn't distributed-- distributed, yet.
All of our offices, I believe, got them before, and we'll make sure that everybody has them on their desk as well. Hold on one second. I'll just say a few more things to frame this, and then we'll give it to Mr. Zine for a second. Dennis?
Well, I'm going to recognize Council President Eric Arceheadi.
It's not the custom to speak from the chair, so thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, today we have before us, as I mentioned, the LA Chamber of Commerce. I'll keep my remarks brief because they're going to say much more interesting things than I am, but we know the challenges in this city right now, an official or an unemployment rate of about 14.3 percent, communities that have been beset by foreclosures, businesses that have gone out of business, the budget deficit that we have here based on declining revenues, our challenges with our pension system. But the focus on City Hall is something that the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce has brought each year. We were just discussing this before, but if I can draw your attention to last year's advocacy agenda, they had a number here of asks, I think there were six of them, beginning a new round of business tax reforms, a pilot project for the Office of Economic Analysis, exploring a ratepayer advocate position, establishing a new multimedia tax category, advocate for LAX modernization, and water reform for statewide. Besides the statewide water reform, this council and this mayor, working with the business community, is delivering on all of those in a way that I think is good for the people of Los Angeles, the communities they serve, for the employers and employees of LA as well. They're coming before us today to give us some analysis of our city once again, both from the 30,000-foot view, but also on a district-by-district view, which is a new thing that hasn't been done before, and I really want to thank them and praise them for this. As we get that distributed, you'll be able to see the statistics on employment in your own district, to look at the number of building permits, looking at the businesses that have started or have gone out, a number of businesses that are in the district, the level of employment, the wage and compensation average in your district. These are the sorts of things that inform our decisions around the horseshoe and help our constituents understand what the city is going through. They also have another ambitious advocacy agenda for today, which I encourage them to speak to us about, some of the things which we've already introduced motions, but we need to pass, other ones which we need to start or to listen to and see whether we can achieve them. But they are great suggestions, they've been well thought out, and from the small, medium, and large business owners that are here and representatives, we thank you for taking the time out of your day to be here, joining with us to make sure that we do have a city that is as economically vibrant as possible. Your work couldn't be more important at this time. So with that, I'll turn it over to you. Matt, or--
To me. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everybody. My name is Matt Toledo. I'm the publisher and the CEO of the Los Angeles Business Journal, and I'm the 2010 Chair of the Chamber's Board of Directors. First, I want to thank Council Member -- not Council -- Council President, pardon me, Garcetti, but the entire council members for hosting us this morning and allowing us to visit with you today. I also want to thank all the business leaders that are behind me who took time out of their schedules and running their business to be here with us this morning at the chamber or the chambers today. We're here this morning because we care deeply about the city of Los Angeles. We see ourselves as shareholders, shareholders of the city, shareholders of if Los Angeles is a company, and at this moment, we believe that our city requires a new way of thinking and a new culture, one that is more focused on results than in process. Over the past two years, with this economy, it's been particularly difficult for businesses. We've struggled as we've tried to emerge--
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. There is too much discussion on the side. It's difficult to hear the speakers. Sergeant Arms, can you please quiet down? And it's not the audience, it's the folks around the horseshoe. Thank you, audience. Sergeant Arms, please, on the continuing conversation, let these folks take it behind the pillars or into another room.
If I might then just punctuate, we really see ourselves as shareholders of this community and stakeholders in the city, and we feel as though this city is at a crisis at this moment and really needs to look at how it operates as an organization, and we feel it should be more focused on results rather than the process. The last two years have been particularly difficult for businesses in our community. We've all struggled to operate our organizations and deal with the difficult economic times. In most cases, we've had to deal with salary cuts, pay freezes, and as the unemployment rate has indicated, layoffs. We also have a great appreciation of the challenges that the budget crisis has been for each of you here at City Hall. For more than 120 years, the mission of the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce has been to be champions, champion policies rather than help grow our economy and improve the quality of life for everybody, not just business people, but our socially as well. The work we do with the Homeless Task Force and the various activities we have throughout the year with education demonstrate that the chamber is much more than an organization that's focused on business. We care about the society and the region at large. We believe that civilization follows commerce, and commerce requires some sort of profit-making engine. More jobs, more commerce, generates more tax revenues that helps drive the services to make this a great city. We're here this morning for three reasons. First, we want to share with you the first-ever LA City Council District's jobs report. This report was commissioned by the chamber and was completed by Beacon Economics, and we believe this is the first report that actually breaks down key economic indicators by council district. We want this information to serve as a benchmark, as a benchmark for each of you to not only understand the jobs that are in your district, but have it be a benchmark to see what kind of policies and what kind of activities you can engage in to help encourage job growth and economic stability within each of your districts. We plan to update this report annually and make it available not only to you, but to all Angelinos, so that we can see what progress we're making together. In a few minutes, you're going to hear from Brad Kemp of Beacon Economics. He's going to provide you the report and overview and answer any questions that you might have. Second, I have Danita Willoughby to my right of AT&amp;T. She's our incoming Vice Chair of Public Policy, and Gary Tobin, the Chamber's President, will briefly outline our job creation and reform priorities. And finally, we have several business and civic leaders that are behind me here today who would appreciate the opportunity to make some brief public comment, so we certainly appreciate your attention this morning, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and partnering with you to make Los Angeles the best city in the country. Brad, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Brad. Good morning, and thank you for having us here. The LA Area Chamber approached Beacon Economics to prepare a report to look at the city at a more granular level, looking at the city council districts. The 15 city council districts was a natural disaggregation of the city, and we've provided the information. If we can move forward in slide, we do have a PowerPoint presentation on the screen. If we can move forward one slide. Apologize for the delay. I'll move forward. When we have the PowerPoint ready to move forward, I'll address each individual slide. There's no way for me to address all 15 council districts and the trends that are going on in each individual district. What I'll more do, just to give you an idea about the data sources and the information contained in, look at the city-level data and understand that everything that we provide at the city-level data is also then broken out for each city council district. It's important to understand that you can directly compare your city council district against city averages to get the better, best sense of where you stand. Always be cautious about comparing against other city council districts on each individual data point, because there clearly can be differences in a number of different variables, such as one area may be a traditional residential community and another an employment center. Any chance of moving forward in slides?
Can we get the slides moving? There's nobody there. Okay, we need to get somebody over to the machine to move the slides.
I apologize.
Do we have someone who can take care of that? I guess it's ready to go, but there's no one pushing the button.
It's okay, I can move forward. The purpose for this event--
There we go. I think it's moving forward.
The purpose of this study overall is to increase the knowledge of the city's economy and how the districts fit within that larger community, increase understanding in the data resources and how it relates to the individual districts, a better understanding of trends in each of the city council districts, and ultimately to increase the use of data in policy development. That's one of the key issues, is that we not only have anecdotal information, which is extremely valuable, but we're able to support or deny that anecdotal information through confirmation in data. Please move forward. Thank you very much. Just to give you a sense of the data points that were included, again, we're fairly limited when we get below the county and city level and the type of data that we can achieve. We included employment and wages in this report, building permits, gross receipts by industry, and again, I say by industry because we can break that data out by what type of industry is producing the largest gross receipts in each district, and then taxable sales revenue in each district. Let me also say that there's some demographics data used in this as well for us to do some of the calculations, such as population size within each district. Thank you. What we can see on the screen here is employment data gathered from the Quarterly Census of Employment and Wages. The employment data provided includes the number of firms, count of employees, and total payroll for the city and each of its city council districts. Throughout this document, the districts will be compared against the city's data to help each district understand how they match up against the city as a whole. Go ahead, please. Building permits and new existing structures data we can see on the screen obtained from the Department of Building and Safety for the city of Los Angeles gives us an idea of where expansion and redevelopment efforts have been happening within the city. From this chart, we can see the city overall experienced a serious drop in construction-related activities in 2008, but there has been some recovery, although slight, in 2009. Within the report, readers will be able to determine where within the city the majority of that recovery has happened. Gross receipts from the city's Department of Finance. All businesses in Los Angeles are required to pay this business tax at a rate determined by the type of products and services provided by each company. The data is broken down by the North American Industrial Classification System codes so that we can understand which industries are generating the majority of this revenue stream. For the city overall, professional and business services produce the largest value. This will vary from district to district. And our last data point is data, taxable sales revenue, and again, here we're giving information on the number of taxable sales revenue collected by the city by district, and it's going to give us a clear sense of the consumer health within each district. Although, again, that's where I say when we compare districts, we have to be careful. Some residents may go into other districts to do their purchasing, and that could reflect a low taxable sales in a given area. Now, as I said, this document does include district comparisons, which I know are valuable to all of the members, so if I can get you to move this cycle forward on a number of-- you can go ahead and press it once. This table, for example, ranks the city council districts in terms of jobs. Go ahead. The employment growth between 2005, 2007, 2009 gives you an idea of how the area's been progressing in job growth. The next one is employment density, and after that, you have average wages, and last, you have the number of firms in your district. So again, it gives you a clear sense of where you stand in terms of employment data. Looking at just ranking purely across city council districts and top jobs, job growth, and average wage, if we hit this once, please-- what you're going to see is that the largest employment center is District 9, not surprising to anyone. Go ahead and hit that again, but not only is it the largest employment center, it is the district with the highest average wage of all districts. If we go ahead and hit it again, now, when we compare that against Mr. Parks' district, which is the smallest employment center in the city, and then we compare that again, it also ranks 15th-- I'm sorry, we can go back one. It ranks unfortunately last in both total jobs and average wage, but it improved the most. As a matter of fact, it was the only city council district that increased in the number of jobs between 2008 and 2009. Important factor in how do we understand where that growth is and how do we continue that trend in that region? Thank you for moving forward. Value of building permits by city council district, we can see as we-- go ahead, please. We can see that in District 3, we saw the most apartments built in 2009. Go forward. We can see that District 5 was largest in terms of commercial growth in 2009, and then we see that in single-family, it was divided between District 5 and District 11. So again, these are the type of information you can pull out of these reports. Go ahead. Gross business receipts, as we looked at, I did want to point out a couple, if you could-- the one area that saw a massive increase, and by the way, the only district that saw a grease, an increase in gross business receipts was City Council District 1. It was a 12, over 12% gain, and it's not surprising, given that healthcare is their largest employer in terms of gross receipt stacks. It's done extremely well. That said, there are other areas with healthcare as their number-one source, obviously have exposure to other industries that have been declining at a rapid pace. So again, it's somewhere where you have to begin-- this is a great basis to start asking questions about your districts, and then at the end, we'll just look at District 9 again as the largest producer of gross business receipts by a considerable amount. Taxable sales, sales tax receipts on the next slide, again, I'll go very quickly, but we can see that there are areas, for example-- Again, I'll go very quickly, but we can see that there are areas, for example, District Four, excuse me, has had two really horrible years in terms of taxable sales growth, negative 2.5 into a negative 15.9. But then we've got District Eight, which shows an increase of 8.5% in 2007 to '08, but in 2008 to '09, dropped by 17.4%. So again, each district is having its own experience through this downturn, and it's important to understand that as we move forward. Go ahead, please. I will ask these two slides, if you look at these maps here, this is a map of employment growth in the city council districts. There are a series of maps at the back of this report that give you a great visual representation of your rankings. And as I move forward, if you watch that map, you'll see that over years, where that growth is happening is shifting within the city. And I think it's important for us to watch those trends and understand them. Thank you. No, you're fine. Go ahead, Beck. The one thing I would ask you to consider, again, you know, we're always cautious about doing direct comparisons across different areas that have different advantages and difficulties to face. So as you look at the comparisons, remember to keep in mind the natural advantages and disadvantages that each city council district, when considering the direct comparisons. Demographics, because you have poverty differences, wealth differences, and education and income differences. Physical geography, some people have access... Some districts have access to the ocean, such as the port. Occupational skills can vary widely from district to district. Transportation, for example, most public transportation clearly goes to the downtown area, which facilitates an ease of business growth. And last, infrastructure, we have a natural growth in hotels near the airports. So again, those natural advantages create some of these numbers. I want to thank, again, the opportunity to come out and share this with you, and I hope as you have questions, you will contact us.
And I thought I might just punctuate a couple of items. This is really our gift to you. This information gives you the demographic analysis of how your district is doing. And as Brad indicated, the ranking isn't, you know, suggests you're the best if you're number one or fifteenth if you're the worst, but to really, you know, consider it like going to the doctor for an annual exam, and this is your cholesterol, and this is indication of your vitals and how you're doing. And we hope you and your staff will memorize, look at these data points, and ideally benchmark them month after month and say, "How are we doing? Are we growing our region? Are we growing our economy? Are we providing the types of activities? Are we approving the policies to not only grow jobs and drive our economy, but do it in an appropriate sort of manner within each of your districts, given the various issues that you face?" So we certainly appreciate... Every council district is different, but this gives you a benchmark to see where you are and something to measure to look forward year after year to work on growing. Do you want to take questions now, or do you want to continue with our policies?
Go ahead.
Well, we have some colleagues that pushed the button.
He's in charge for now, so...
Very well.
May I, Ms. Perry?
There are also then the policy prescriptions. I mean, we could get into this right now, or we could just have them, you know, the other five minutes or so on the policy suggestions, and then we can take them all. Why don't we do that?
We have Ms. Perry, Ms. Cartes, Mr. Reyes, so let's go proceed, and then we'll go to the colleagues.
Very fine. I'm going to turn it over to Danita and to Gary.
Perfect. Thank you. Good morning, council members. My name is Danita Willoughby, and I'm vice president of External Affairs at AT&amp;T. And as Matt mentioned, I'm also the incoming vice chair of the Policy Committee, as well as I'll be the chamber board... I'll be the... Excuse me, chairperson, thank you, of the board in 2012. Over the past year, we've worked with many of you guys to talk about how City Hall and the business community can come together to strengthen our business climate and create an economic environment that facilitates job creation. I also know that our chamber staff has worked very closely with your policy staffs to make sure that the voice of the business community is heard on these critical issues. Our advocacy agenda this year is very simple and succinct. It's about putting Los Angeles back to work and making job creation the number-one priority citywide and in each of your respective districts. We have five initiatives that we're confident will help businesses, large and small, to grow their companies in Los Angeles. And the good news, as President Garcetti mentioned, there's a lot of progress that's been made on many of them already. The first part of our policy agenda is to complete the business tax reforms that will make L.A. more economically competitive with neighboring cities. The Chamber applauds your recent establishment of a new tax category for internet-based businesses. We also applaud the work that you've done to create a three-year tax holiday for all new businesses and for enacting L.A. taxpayers' Bill of Rights. Now, we strongly urge you to implement the remaining recommendations by the Business Tax Advisory Committees, including an across-the-board reduction to tax rates. Second, the Chamber urges your continued focus and action on streamlining the city's permitting and licensing process, whether you call it 12 to 2, 17 to 1. I think we all would agree there is a great opportunity for us to streamline the process. And we know that staffing reductions have had a huge impact. However, businesses should never have to endure two to three years of red tape in order to open their doors and create jobs. It's a reputation and a process that I think us, by working together, we can repair. Third, support small businesses by permanently investing in an office of small business at City Hall. L.A. is the nation's capital for small business, and City Hall should provide frontline assistance so that entrepreneurs can get up and running at minimal cost and in the shortest amount of time. Fourth, we'd like you to see restore the funding for Higher L.A.'s youth program. As you know, the budget was drastically reduced this year from $4 million to $500,000. Fortunately, the gap was closed by federal stimulus dollars. However, next year, those stimulus dollars will not be available. And this program is critical and an example of an excellent investment that can be made for taxpayers when you think about it's creating job skills and putting people back to work, especially in that 18 to 24 category. Finally, we'd urge you to make the pledge that no new city ordinances will be introduced that will hinder job creation. That's why we strongly support taking the Office of Economic Analysis pilot project and making it a permanent part of City Hall. Much like the report we shared with you today, this office can provide the nonpartisan economic information that you need to make the best policy decisions. At the end of the day, Los Angeles job creators want to be able to tell their friends that City Hall has been a partner, not an obstacle, in creating new jobs in Los Angeles. The success of our partnership will also, and most importantly, increase revenue to fund vital city services and improve the quality of life for all Angelinos. Thank you so much, and I'll turn it over to Gary.
Good morning, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity. Well, I have the opportunity here to talk about an issue that you've been spending a lot of time on, and there'll be a news conference on this afternoon. Every businessperson in this room knows along with you that one of the most difficult challenges facing you and our city is how to address the annual budget deficit and the growing cost of pensions and healthcare. During the last two years, the council has made some very difficult decisions to reduce the city's workforce and eliminate a number of city services. But we all know, according to the CAO, that once again this next spring, you'll face another $300 million-plus budget deficit, and you'll face that same deficit each and every year in the foreseeable future. How we address this challenge, this budget challenge, and the growing cost of benefits for retirees will determine how many city services will need to be cut and how many current city employees will be laid off next spring and every spring thereafter. The reality is that every additional dollar that the city lays out for pensions and healthcare means a dollar less for libraries, parks, police, fire, and other basic services. That's why we strongly urge pension reform that will have a positive impact on your budget deliberations in future years. We also encourage the kind of healthcare reform in terms of employee contributions that you've been discussing. These proposals you have been discussing are a good start, and we encourage you to go as far as you possibly can, because every cut you make today will help you in your budget deliberations next spring and the spring after that. It's so important that we preserve as many city services as we can, reduce the number of layoffs of current city employees, and protect taxpayers who themselves are hurting from this recession. We know that budgeting for a city, a business, or a family is about taking a fixed amount of money and spending it where it benefits the most, the largest number of people. And we think that you benefit the largest number of Angelinos by addressing the rising cost of pensions and healthcare benefits for future retirees by acting today. We look forward to our partnership with the city and the mayor and city employees to create a business climate that pulls us out of this economic downturn by generating jobs and tax revenue that the city of Los Angeles needs. Los Angeles is the most diverse and vibrant city on this planet. We must lead the way, and we, as a business community, pledge our continued collaboration with you and other stakeholders in our community to make for an outstanding vision and opportunities for everyone in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Terry. I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Tobin yesterday and going through the report, and one thing that jumped out for me is that downtown is a major economic engine, a major center, and I think I have to take issue with people who are not willing to understand the significance and the dramatic effect that downtown has had on the entire basin and the region with respect to bringing in new jobs with a level of wages that are highly competitive. And I think it affirms what I've always known, that this is a part of the city that should be supported with infrastructure, with public transportation, so people have the ability to get in and out of here, or stay here, or live here, have schools here, have healthcare here, grocery stores here, to be able to build a whole new community that didn't exist before, because we're already drawing people and have the decent jobs here. And all I can hope for is that the projects that we've already gotten completed have a catalytic effect. It seems to be working on Seventh Street. I can attribute mostly the work that I've been able to do on Central Avenue, south of Washington Boulevard, to the catalytic effect of redevelopment downtown. Now, most of my district is a redevelopment area, so we've been able to capture the tax increment and reinvest it back into the community. I'm not suggesting that that's a model that should be applied across the city, but what I am saying is with focus and willingness to push yourself in non-traditional ways, you can create great innovation and opportunity. The one question I did have was on page 24 of the report, the page District Nine summary, the difficulty in pinpointing the gross business receipts and sales tax revenue. And it says, "While District Nine does report the largest share of gross business receipts in the city, the number has been trending downward for a few years, a decline of 9.8% in 2009. It's difficult to pinpoint where the loss is coming from." And I was just wondering, do you have a couple... Do you have any ideas, even if you can't pinpoint it? Theories, ideas?
I don't have data enough to have a sound answer for you, and I don't want to answer incorrectly.
Yeah.
But we're going to continue to work with the data and the city that we're getting from the data to ensure that we can classify those businesses accurately and give you a better count of that.
Okay. I'd like to stay on top of that, and hopefully you'll communicate with me on that, because that's a trend, that there may be some adjustments that we may be able to make in the way that businesses are categorized. I don't know if it's a SIC code issue or whatever, but I'm interested in that.
Thank you, Ms. Perry and Mr. Cartes. Ms. Cartes.
Thank you very much. Something struck me as a bit of what we have here in the city of Los Angeles, we have the Tale of Two Cities. For example, you're quoting the income in my district, and I'm looking at this as $43,500 per worker who actually shows up and reports for work in my district. I wish my households in my district of two income earners was at least $43,000. The average income household in my district, from the last time I saw it, is not $43,000. It's less than that. So hold on a second. So my point is this, what's relevant when it comes to serving the communities that we serve, yes, we serve businesses, but at the same time, we serve households, children who go to school, people who need sidewalks repaired, people who need law enforcement to be patrolling their communities, et cetera. So it would be helpful if we saw a side-by-side understanding of, it's great to see the jobs that are happening and people reporting for work in our districts, but that doesn't necessarily mean that when they leave work, they go into a driveway, eat in a kitchen, and sleep in a bedroom in our district. So, for example, when you talk about Ms. Perry's district, I think it's a stark contrast of a Tale of Two Cities. You have the downtown area, which is part of CD9, which you used as an example, yet you have, south of downtown, a community where those incomes are not going to bedrooms in her district. So this is good information. I think it's the business side of incomes, but it really doesn't help us understand the picture of what the balance of responsibilities we have when it comes to business and also the income households in our district as well, because sometimes, like I said, Tale of Two Cities, you have pretty good incomes. The way I calculate it, somebody who's making $43,500 a year is making about $21 bucks an hour. The average person in my district would say, "Show me a $21 an hour job, and I'll abandon my old job, and I'll take that one in a heartbeat." You going to say something?
If I might, thank you very much. You make an excellent observation, and others have elevated that question as well. And so this is our first step at producing this information. When we do it next year, we certainly have, as I understand it from Beacon Economics, the ability to get at that data. So I think it's an excellent suggestion and one we will intend to look at doing in the future. At the same time, the economic information of the folks that are coming to work in your district is something that is... Should be important to you. It should be something to evaluate, because those people are generating potentially sales in the tiendas and other places within the district in which they work. So having this data point is relevant, and I would urge you not to dismiss it, but I strongly agree with you that having the additional piece of data to understand what is the household income of the people that live in my district is essential.
Sure. I just want to make it clear, I appreciate the report, and this is all relevant information, but it's basically telling us one half of what we do need to know and should understand. And I speak not only as a council member, but before I became a full-time politician, I was a full-time business owner, where I did not draw a salary. If my business made money, my family was able to eat. If my business didn't make money, I lived on no salary. I was a mom-and-pop-type business. So my point is, I can appreciate the business side of it, but at the same time, as an elected official, we have other parameters that play into each other, and when we get that information together, I think that it creates a much better informed electorate.
Very good. Brad, did you have a comment on this?
Sure, and I totally agree with you. We always talk about two populations in any given city or city council district. You've got the residents, and then you've got workers, and there is not necessarily a complete overlap of the two. Not only do I think we can break out the... Especially as the 2010 census data comes out, we can get down to the granular level. We can, at this point, go granular 2000, but it is less value. What I will tell you is that we may be able to look at the city council districts and look at the, where do the residents go outside that district for work? What categories or what jobs are they taking, and what wages are they getting paid? That's what's coming back into the district. So I think it is an exciting prospect.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, councilmembers, and I appreciate this dialogue, to know that this is a first step. It's crucial. Many of us, when we look at the regional relationship, when you pull out this profile, it's hard to, how can I say this, create the kind of synergy when you have 89 cities surrounding us. Each city has their role. Obviously, we're the biggest one in the center. When you talk about the multiplier effect, the notion of desirability, what that does to quality of life. As Councilman Cartes has been stating, we start balancing out the Tale of Two Cities. When I look at my district, 40% of my district is at or below poverty, 40%. When I look at my district, 40% of my district is at or below poverty, 40%. When you look at the levels of homicides versus property crimes, you're gonna see an overlay. Now, when you start looking at the notion of people per square mile, and who is actually living here, I would venture to say that because it doesn't show up in your data tables, it doesn't show up in your codes, then more than probably half have been missed. And the reason why I say that is that I have in certain pockets 70,000 people per square mile. I have times say that my district is like the Alice Island of the West. The largest number of immigrant, first days are spent coming into parts of my district, in Westlake, in Pico Union, parts of Chinatown. And so, they're real people, but they don't show up on these databases. So, that's what I call the sub-economy, which we all know. The other day, I was walking Sixth and Union, when we had the unfortunate shooting of the gentleman from Guatemala. It was about 7:00 PM, and I was counting heads on that one block. In one block, I counted 250 persons. In the next block, I counted 330. And this is only on one side, on one sidewalk. So, the vendor activity and amount of cash flowing in that little pocket was amazing. And people were selling goods and wares that they probably stock up in their living room. And these are people in the thousands, in the thousands in our city, and they don't show up on these tables. So, there are steps we have to take, I believe, that begins to formalize that sub-economy, because those are real dollars spent. And to do this city justice for mainstream business, to start understanding how they look at profiles of our economy, so they can understand desirability of our place, because all they see is poverty. But if I were to take some of the marketers, people who start thinking about In-N-Out, where to put one, when they start thinking about these other places that complement our ethnic foods, our ethnic cultures, we can have a much greater presence with tourism, because now it becomes a place, a safe place to go visit, as opposed to a place you want to stay away from, which our own brochures, when you look at our city, they actually say, stay away from this community. I've read it in the ALX propaganda. I look at it, and go, wow, we're penalizing ourselves. They have yet to see what we've done in our own city in the past five years. So, how we, we have this love-hate relationship with Los Angeles. And the fact is, there's so many good things happening in our respective district, but it doesn't get captured in these databases. So, I would hope as a first step, I could see this as a primer, that these are the regional impacts, regional indicators that help the mainstream in terms of how you look at business-friendly issues. When we start drilling down as to who creates real jobs, it's the small and medium-sized businesses. Now, I take the cue from the banks. They created cards where folks who are either undocumented or just started becoming citizens, where they can save money by not going to the, those quick-pay, quick-check places, they actually have bank cards now, before they even have IDs or before they even have driver's licenses. And there's a lot of commerce occurring there, but they chose, these are banks from other countries, they chose to acknowledge them, as opposed to keeping them in the shadows. So, these are dynamics, I'm hoping we can create models, perhaps start capturing the international strength of our city, albeit, albeit many of our communities do not fit the mainstream profile, but I have a lot of faith in the dynamic nature of our population, how it moves and how it survives, and we have to figure out ways to capture that profile. I mean, for our own good, because I think we're missing big markets, because our own biases and inability to understand these nuances when it comes to diversity. And I'm hoping we can go in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. LaBonge.
First of all, I want to thank you very much for taking all those. Hope bring you back to your college days, where you feel, go into a little seminar. This is very good work. I think what Mr. Carton and Mr. Reyes said is very important, and we all agree. I see Elise Buick for United Way, I remember the report that they did, which kind of counteracted a little bit. You coined the phrase, I believe, Tale of Two Cities, so that's all important. Couple of big issues there, you know, that I, and I think it's good, and it all can be broken down, statistics are so important. Water and power. How much better are Los Angeles businesses, because they're in Los Angeles and they have water and power as opposed to Edison? Does anyone have an idea on that? Have you looked at our power rates and our water rates as it goes to industry? Any comment?
My estimate is 10% to 15% better.
Better. So, I think that's an important value, because I think that's why the city built its system, because they saw the economic development. In just a few short years, we're gonna celebrate the centennial of the aqueduct, which Mahal made the greatest speech of all time. There it is, take it, which fed the pueblo and fed its development. Also, on issues of public works, are public works jobs in this study?
Yes, they are.
They are? Because there's a billion dollars from the San Fernando Valley through central Los Angeles, both a big water project and a big replacement project for sewer system, which is real important to know the public component. LA Unified, LA Community College District, all have been doing great building programs. That is in this list, and I think it should be broken out, because I think what element of this discussion, of the stimulus package that came out of Washington, DC, a lot of this is local stimulus that we've taxed ourselves, that should be at least a knowledge of a credit to get work that is needed for infrastructure, which is so important. So, I wanted to mention that as well. And then on the future, the most important future public works project that I hope we could focus on is high-speed rail. High-speed rail is gonna connect inner cities of California and job bases, and how that works. So, I think these are very good, important, very good report, and I greatly appreciate it. And advocacy is so important on the spectrum. So, all our doors are open, and we all have staffs who want assistance and gauge, and hopefully we all can find a way to get to where we want to get to, and have a city that has the enterprise. And I see the work that other members have done in their neighborhoods that have made a difference because of local street commerce. The small business in small neighborhoods makes people feel that someone cares about that neighborhood, so it's key. And I pledge my support to assist in this. The only new ordinance that I would propose, because of reduction of city service, would be often fast-food paces near intersections, have no street trash can. And that trash ends up in the street, because people don't find a way to put it. I may want to find a way to work with business that fast-food or other enterprise have a street trash can that they service, because those who did your job before, 100 years ago, they swept the street in front of it. The businessperson got out and took care of the street. Over the years, the city did it. Now, the city has reduced that, and this is just a small thing, but a clean street, a clean area makes people want to come into business. So, that's an aspect that I'll work with you on, on a bigger issue, because that, clean streets is clean bay. Clean bay is all that environmental challenge that we want, clean river, which is so important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge.
Last point, since I've got a minute, tourism is so, so, so important. Tourism in Hollywood.
Thank you, Mr. LaBonge. The buttons aren't working on the left side, so we've got, all the buttons are out. Okay, well, Mr. Rosendahl, and then I have Mr. Weisar, Mr. Kurets, Mr. Corian. If there's anyone else who wants to speak, just let us know, and we'll put you on. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, great report. Thank you for giving us an analysis. It helps us in what we need to do as policymakers, so you've done a great step. I was intrigued by the homeless thing. You know, my district, which is a high-end district, we have the ocean, you know, fresh air, we always have development going on, and we always will. We opened a project the other day. No matter what the recession is, it is a place to be, thanks to Mother Nature giving us that ocean and the mountains and the wetlands. We also have a substantial amount of homelessness. We have a little town in the heart of my district called Santa Monica, okay? It does several things. Number one, it brings in over 200,000 cars into my district every day to go to work there. They never worked, and our city never worked with them historically, to work on transportation modes, housing modes, and all that. In fact, its town's population went down from 96,000 to 86,000, so the housing wasn't created for the workers. That's why I'm big on development in my district that creates housing, affordable housing, high-end housing, whatever housing, so there are less car trips coming into my district. That's why we cut the ribbon the other day there. It was beautiful to see that group creating another couple of hundred units. That's the plus. Bad news is, they also push out the homeless, and they all are in my area, have cars and campers everywhere. I have a real tough situation, and Venice looks like a shanty town half the time, because the money isn't invested back in Venice, where it should, since it's the number-one tourist attraction in our city. What I'd like you guys to do is help me create a bid along the oceanfront, okay? So, the businesses there can work with me more effectively in getting money back, in getting projects back, in getting opportunities back. For instance, I put in a skateboard park. It was languishing for 10 years. We got it going. I'd like some naming rights issues there, where we could actually then have naming rights and invest back in Venice. So, whatever you can do to help me in investments in Venice, which is a tourist place, I would be most grateful. Secondly, I'm cutting a deal with Chrysalis, which is right here in the audience there. These are great people, to keep my bathrooms clean. I'm gonna be announcing that my bathrooms will be open until 10:30 at night. My police, we got a great chief of police. He's totally focused on my district and has given me more officers. So, we're gonna be able to keep the bathrooms open until 10:30 at night, so that everybody can go to the restroom. This is trouble with America. We don't have enough public bathrooms. So, where do people go? And in my district, it's become a huge health issue and a social problem. So, with Chrysalis, whatever you can do to support Chrysalis, which does an amazing amount of work, grabbing former homeless people and getting them jobs and making things happen. But I would like very much to have your homeless task force that you've created, which I think is fabulous that you're doing it, work closely with my office on the issues of people living in the cars and campers and the homelessness. We're creating a program with PATH. PATH is a group that works with homelessness. We're finding locations in my district where people can live at night, at least a certain period of the day, and sleep in their car and camper. Right now, we have a city law, 8502, you cannot sleep in your car and camper. Fact of the matter is, people do. What are they doing with it? They're sleeping in it. So, they're pushed around and moved around. We're gonna find locations, and I'd like the business community to help me on locations. We went up to Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara has the private sector and the public sector and the church groups all working together. They've created 21 locations where cars and campers can go. Those who want to participate in that program will be certain rules and regulations, and they'll get wraparound services where they need it and want it. Those who don't, we're gonna get them out of my face, because they're in my people's face, in front of everybody's face. So, what I'd like you to do, like, for instance, I'll just use, I don't want to mention a business or two, but there are a lot of businesses in my district that at night, a parking lot might take one camper or one car and work out a relationship with those people to be there. But I need help from the business community to help complement and collaborate with the issues of the homelessness. Can I get that sense from you, that you'll do that? Matt?
Yeah. We'll absolutely look at, with our homeless task force, we'll absolutely look at that, absolutely.
Very good. And also, talk to the business community about some parking lots that they might be able to let us work with.
Good idea.
We'll have officials involved. It'll be all straight above board, and it'll be rules and regulations and wraparound services.
Excellent.
Great. Thank you, and I appreciate what you just said.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and Mr. Weisar, follow Mr. Kurets, Mr. Corian, and Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much, and I certainly appreciate the engagement that the chamber's having with the council. I think this is so important. In my four and a half years here, this first time we have this open discussion like this, which is a great thing to do. And we all care about Los Angeles, and given the circumstances right now, the financial circumstance, certainly all of us are looking for ways to support our city, to make sure we not only get out of this, but to look to the future, and a brighter one. And that means jobs, that means giving people a means to provide for their families, and allowing us to say that we do have a good quality of life. And in my four and a half years here, one thing that I found that is missing from the city of Los Angeles is that we don't have that center in the city, or perhaps in joint partnership with the private sector, to talk about how do we continue to attract certain industries to the city of LA. So, for example, we all know that some of the emerging industries in the future are biotech, the biomed, but we should be talking right now, in conjunction with the private sector, about how we provide a package of incentives, how do we already have that property ready for them, and we're just beginning to do it in the clean tech, for the clean tech quarter, so that if there are businesses out there that want to locate someplace, we're like, here, this is our incentives, and this is the location where you could come. And I think in the future, when we get this downturn again in the economy, it is cyclical, we'll see this again, we'll mitigate the high unemployment rates that we have right now, we'll mitigate those impacts of a downturn economy. One thing that I was thinking is where this can take place. The Office of Economic Analysis, we're moving that, I think that's a good thing. Right now, you have the mayor's business team and some of the economic development efforts that the mayor's office takes, that a lot of it was started under Mayor Riordan. But I do think we need this kind of semi-public-private entity that's supported by the city and the private sector, that could independently work with business and government to be that liaison. That's kind of structurally what I'm thinking, that I've seen in other cities, but I do think we need that place, that thing, that could be researching, thinking, and implementing some of these, and attracting some of the emerging industries. I've had some forums here in these chambers where I've been talking about elections and how do we reform our election system to get more people to participate, to give more people confidence in their government. And our next forum is gonna be on economic development and jobs, and how perhaps we could, and look at what the city has, and should we, and how should we create that entity, and should we go in that direction? I know I spoke with Gary and Matt and others, and I think you're gonna be part of that discussion. I look forward to that, because I may be wrong. If I am wrong, tell me, we do need that entity or not, but that is certainly missing for us, to attract the emerging industries and be ahead of the game, so in the future, when that downturn comes again, we're better prepared to handle it. So, I look forward to those discussions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar, and Mr. Kurets, follow Mr. Corian.
Well, that's already been talked about, and I echo my colleagues in expressing my gratitude for this dialogue. I'm just only gonna focus on one point, which is runaway film production. And I'm wondering whether you've looked at the impacts of that upon our whole city and upon our whole economic underpinning. I've always felt this is the most important industry in the city, not only because it creates jobs, it creates a lot of ancillary jobs, from dry cleaners to hotels to restaurants to accounting, and on and on. It also dramatically impacts our image and tourism, and people come here because of our film industry, because they can see film stars on the streets. I think there's a lot of connection there, and while we've been doing some things, I still don't think we're there yet. And I'm wondering whether you've looked at that, whether you have additional suggestions for things that we could be doing, whether this is something you'll be looking at in the future, and how we can all work with you to try and turn that around. There's some parts of the industry that are still reasonably healthy, but feature film production is virtually gone. We had a little bit of a return largely because of Mr. Corian's work in the legislature and some tax credits, although modest compared to what we would like. That clearly has helped, but once that money's run out, I don't know that we've made any permanent progress in that regard without finding a way to bring more money in to do that. So, any thoughts in that arena?
Well, that's, the industry is extremely important to the community. I applaud the measures that you took, discussed a couple of weeks ago, to not charge for parking lots and make other city facilities available. I think every time when someone complains because the lights are on at midnight, because somebody is filming, if you would just share with them that that's really important for our community, because people are working and making movies, we would be delighted to work with you. You've been working with Film LA, and I think they're doing a good job. The Motion Picture Industry Association, I know they were before you two weeks ago. We, it is one of our goals to get the state to re-up and add to the incentives that they provided, because that really did make a difference. For the first time, it made a significant difference in our ability to keep motion pictures here. I think we kept at least 30 some motion pictures, plus tons of commercials here, as a result of the work that Councilman Corian did and his colleagues in Sacramento.
And personally, I think we're closer than I'd like to losing this industry, so I think, once we have a little momentum in the right direction, we have to find every possible way to keep that going. And I know Mr. Corian at the state level, Councilmember Alarcon at the local level have been working on this. We've made a little progress, but I'm still very nervous that we're not necessarily making enough progress to feel comfortable as other cities within this country and other countries are building a better and better infrastructure. But unless we pull a lot of it back, we're handing them the opportunity to take more of our industry.
You're good to be worried, and you should continue to be worried. I reviewed a study that was done last week. The LA EDC produced an analysis, and film business actually is holding up pretty well. But your point is well made. It's the feature films that we're losing nationally and globally because of the incentives in other markets, so we need to do more.
So, well, thank you, and whatever else you can do to work with us in this arena, I think is important.
Thank you. And colleagues, the queue switch is not working. We're passing out yellow pieces of paper, and as long as the clerk sees that, then they will put you on the queue. We're going to put Mr. Reyes on the queue. Mr. Corian, followed by Ms. Hahn and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Kurets, for bringing up the important topic of film and TV production. I think just a quick note on that, there's funding for five years under the program. It will be essential for the state legislature to make that incentive permanent, and I think that with data that like LEEDC is developing, that I hope that you will join them in, in continuing to develop the data that demonstrates the multiplier effect of that industry on non-industry jobs as well. I think we'll have an opportunity to make that a permanent incentive, but only if we have the data to prove that it's paying off, and I believe it is. I just wanted to thank the chamber for this report. It's really terrific, very useful data, and I think too often in government at every level, policymaking is based more on the bumper sticker slogan than it is on data and evidence. And I think this is the kind of material that is extraordinarily helpful to all of us, I think, in developing jobs, developing strategies. And it also shows, as a number of my colleagues have said, that in different parts of the city, different approaches are going to be necessary to deal with jobs development. And we clearly have to have a variety of strategies just in order to keep up with the job loss that we're suffering, let alone to start to build positive job growth for the 21st century. A couple of quick questions. It was unclear to me, because I know the employment data in this was drawn from the quarterly census of employment and wages. It was unclear to me whether, and Mr. LeBange asked about public works projects, but does this include any public sector employment? Does it include the employment of public employees?
It includes all public sector jobs.
Okay. So on that note, we have a breakdown by district and citywide of gross receipts by industry sector, but government is not included in that, obviously, because it doesn't generate gross receipts. I wonder if we could have, if it's also possible to have a breakdown on not just gross receipts, but on employment by industry sector by district, so that we can see what the strongest areas of actual jobs are in each of our districts and citywide, and also frankly, so that we can see what relative proportion of our workforce is employed in the public sector versus the private sector right now, and how those ratios are changing over time.
We're going to work with the employment development department, who we've gathered the data from, using GIS maps and council district shape. But the problem was is that some of the year-to-year data was volatile and at the industry level. And we're working with them right now to try to clean that database up so that we can get better district data. So we'll work on that over this next year.
Terrific. Again, thanks again, very good work.
Thank you, Mr. Corian. Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much. Obviously, my council district took a big hit as a result of the downturn in cargo at the Port of Los Angeles. And it wasn't just my district because certainly what goes on at the port affects regional, actually affects national, affects the global economy, but particularly, there's a lot of jobs that are directly associated with the Port of Los Angeles. I mean, I was in a restaurant the other night, and they had had to lay off a couple of folks in the restaurant because directly tied to longshoremen spending their money, you know, in this particular restaurant. So it really has an impact. I'm thankful to say, and I think it's a good trend, cargo is picking up. I think the last three months were the highest it's been, you know, in a decade. I'd like to hear your analysis of, you know, the real role of, you know, the international trade industry, particularly the Port of Los Angeles, in not only my council district, but really in the region, and what do you see as the future there? The other issue I always talk about, haven't been able to figure that out yet completely, is the relationship between the export business and businesses in Los Angeles. I mean, exports are always really lopsided in terms of imports coming in. The international trade industry, I still think, is a growing, glowing, booming business. How do we do a better job of connecting businesses, I think particularly small businesses, women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, into the whole realm of exports? Just don't feel like we've focused enough on that. To me, it's a window that has got the greatest potential for growth, I think, anywhere. And the other thing I'd like you to comment on is the green technology that we talk about. We talk about green jobs. Are we going to be the new Silicon Valley in Los Angeles as it relates to green jobs? I think our policies, particularly at the Port of Los Angeles, the green, clean air policies have created this laboratory. You know, we're mandating that things are cleaner at the port. I think that, you know, presents a laboratory where these new innovative green technology emerging businesses can actually, you know, try out their products, have test cases. I mean, we're the perfect place to encourage and incentivize for these, for green technology. We have Port Tech LA is a new business down at the Port of Los Angeles that is trying to do just that, encourage and incubate new businesses. So I'd like to hear your take on, you know, what role you think the port's going to play in all of our futures. You know, how can we connect more folks to the export side of the international trade industry? And where are we, really, where are we with green jobs in Los Angeles?
Sure. Obviously, we didn't focus on looking at the port individually, but Beacon Economics has a history of doing reports for the port, and we recognize it's a very important engine for the region. As we've looked at, there's another study now looking at what are the related businesses off-port that are working fundamentally there because the port is located there. Until we've done that kind of research, it's really hard to say what the economic engine is. We always say that a lot of the goods do go outside the region. We see limited benefit from that, but the jobs on the port themselves are very good paying, but relatively limited in number. So again, I think a more detailed study needs to be done. Going to the green issue, I think the question of success in that long term is, what's the demand in the consumer, whether it be the individual buying a product at home or a business integrating a green product and process? We're working with, I'm a co-founder of the California Green Workforce Coalition, and we're looking at these issues, trying to figure out, you know, what's the demand going to be, and I agree with you. I think the ports are an incubator, are an opportunity, just like we did the Clean Trucks Program, where we reduced diesel emissions was a major factor. I think there's a lot of other things that could be addressed at the port directly. So I wish I had more research to give you numbers, but I do think it's definitely an area of research needed.
And as it relates to the chamber, our media past chair, Fran Enman, Majestic Realty, I'm sure you know, she's very involved with our Committee on Infrastructure and Transportation. And so we should be sitting out with you to talk about what things are going on. As everybody knows, the Panama Canal is going to be coming online here very shortly in terms of increasing their ability to take these super freighters, and that's going to add more competition, and we really are at risk relative to the port, which is a major economic engine for us right now. So we'll follow up with you with Fran.
And I will add to the fact that with the dollar that's relatively stable, it had seen some rise but fallen again and is stabilized. If the dollar remains relatively low, we expect that'll do well for exports, and we think volumes at the port, as we've seen, gone to more hours of operation again. We see that trend continuing. So I would imagine that we're going to have growth throughout 2011 into 2012 at a slow pace.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, our final speaker, and we have 15 public comment cards.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to ask if, given the dialogue you're hearing today and seeing how we're trying to drill down a little bit and look at different layers of factors that influence our economy, are there models that you're aware of that are being used in other places that might fold in some of these other factors that speak to our international role within the world economy? Is there anything out there that you can speak to?
Well, I don't mind saying Beacon Economics has an international trade report, which you can find available on our website. In terms of models, can you clarify the question in terms of...
Let me put it this way. With our technology today, and I'll give you an example. I was working with some of the folks at UCLA, and I saw a mapping system where they actually have been able to identify the folks who come from different towns within Central America, within Mexico. So you have the federations of Mexico, for example, people from Oaxaca, Oaxaqueños. They have a connection between their villages and the neighborhoods here in Los Angeles. I'm looking at the Red Shield. Arine Lewis is out there, I want to thank her, and it's a lot of heroes out in the audience, I want to thank you, those in the private sector, because we work with you at many different levels and at different environments and organizing our communities. But there you have a model in which you can literally see in real numbers, folks could come from different regions from Mexico in our city, folks from El Salvador in our city, and yet they survive on their own island. They're not introduced to the systems that you are familiar with because of the language barrier, because of the cultural barrier. That is, I believe, an indicator that we need to formalize. We can't afford to leave it in the sub-economy or say, wow, that's the way they live, or that's the way that neighborhood behaves, and that's not really part of this picture. I mean, we can't afford that anymore. And so I'm asking you, in your economic analysis report, do you want to, or do you see value in that analysis, and can we incorporate this so we can see a better picture of what we need to do and how we serve this range of populations that make up this great international city? And I want to pose that question.
You want to go ahead? You know, it certainly is relevant and very important, and as, you know, we're sitting here listening to these questions and comments, we certainly appreciate your attention and, you know, consideration, what we presented to you. We're going to take that suggestion and the others we've received this morning and look at how we can enhance this study to make it even more relevant for all of us. So thank you for that suggestion.
And just, I want to point out, while we know there's a massive population that isn't documented, a big portion of that population, let's say undocumented population, that has jobs, that they're working, let's say, through a social security number, they will be included in these counts that you're seeing on the table. We know there's a population that is not as well. I just want to say that we've got to capture that additional amount, and that's a very difficult thing when they don't participate in the, let's say, the data gathering efforts.
I should introduce you to some of the folks I'm talking about and maybe enhance your models, but I appreciate that.
I would love to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Reyes was our final speaker, but now we have Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Garcetti.
Just a quick comment on two levels. One is LAX. Since I've been in office, I've said modernization, yes, expansion, no. The chamber finally got that message, which meant there wouldn't be the lawsuits about the expansion concept, which kept that airport looking in shambles, like a third-world airport since 1984, when the last modernization takes place. So first, I want to thank the chamber for understanding that modernization makes sense. We are spending billions of dollars. We've spent about a billion so far on the Tom Bradley Terminal. We'll finish it by 121212, the entire terminal. With Gina Marie's leadership, we have four other green-lighted projects that we're moving rather effectively toward. Where I'd like you to help me is with the conference center concept. I've been talking about this for five years too, and I need your help. A conference center is a location at the airport along Century Boulevard, and I was able to get $7 million out of the feds to clean up Century Boulevard, and it's looking better. But a conference center is an incubator for the convention center, and it's also a destination place. Instead of those hotels just being transit hotels for airline people, it can be a destination point, and it's a great idea. The guy who runs the convention center is in 100% agreement with me, but I'd like your oomph, muscle, to help me move forward with that so that we can have that conference center. It would be a great thing. We have the Community College bond measure that was passed. They're willing to partner with us, but I need some real leadership from the business community, because once we have a conference center at LAX along Century Boulevard, it will just enhance the entire community. So I'd like that.
This is the first I'm hearing of that idea. I think it's an excellent suggestion, really enhances that district, that area. So have somebody or staff personally have them call me, and we'll engage it with the chamber and the paper. It's an excellent suggestion.
Great. And the 3010 and the Measure R, I'm so thrilled with your support and leadership on that, to get 12 projects over the next 10 years while we're still alive, and instead of having that MTA board fight with themselves as a dysfunctional group, they're all working together now, and I thank you for that support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Garcetti, our final speaker.
Thank you. I will be brief as in seconds. Thank you all so much for your time. Thank you to the members who are here as well, and thank you to the council members for their ideas and their thoughts. I think you've been clear what a good suggestion for legislative platform is for this year. It's something that we have embraced, and the parts that we haven't yet looked at, we will look at in the next few weeks, and so your members can see that accountability, can know what we can do. I think we all subscribe to that central philosophy, you deserve what you want, are a very good explanation as to why you can't have it. And between those two, we certainly will see what we can do this year. It's a tough year, but with your leadership and the collective focus on the economy, I do feel that our better days are just around the corner for us here in Los Angeles, but we have to do it the right way and make sure when we do recover, it's with the right priorities too. So thank you very much for that, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, President Garcetti, very much, and thank you all the members of council and all the business leaders that have joined us here today. We want to continue to work together, to continue to make Los Angeles a vibrant city where people want to continue to work, play, and live. So we really appreciate your time this morning and attention.
And if you want to stick around, we have 15 cards on this particular subject matter. We'll hear from those folks now. The, Mr. LeBange?
I'm just saying, because they spoke for the hour, you don't have to sit there. You can just sit here wherever you want.
I just wanted to make sure that you're welcome to remain while we hear from the public speakers. Karen Hathaway? Karen Hathaway?
My name is Karen Hathaway. I'm president of Laco Limited. I employ 225 good people in downtown Los Angeles at the Los Angeles Athletic Club. They're people from every council district that work there. Last month, our company celebrated its 130th anniversary. Downtown has been our headquarters for 130 years. My roots in the business community run very deep. When I was Chair of the Central City Association in the 90s, we founded the Downtown Center BID, and for 15 years now, businesses like mine have taxed themselves to do things that relieve the city of its obligation. My great-great-grandfather was a founder of the Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber was started shortly before the financial crisis of 1893. Well, there are very strong parallels between 1893 and today. The private sector was decimated, unemployment spiked to 11%, banks failed, property owners were wiped out, but there is a striking difference between that time and today. At that time, the city was right-sized, not today. Plenty of people have been hurt by this recession, but the private sector has worked to right-size itself. The city needs to do that too. The city is still out of step. People in the private sector three years ago accepted pay cuts, lowered expectations for retirement, and accepted eliminating their benefits. They were thankful to have a job. Our businesses pay taxes with hard-earned dollars, and it hurts us to see how the city is spending these dollars today. You, however, can fix it. You must develop a streamlined budget that puts priorities on services, eliminating or privatizing wherever possible. And please, immediate action is needed by you to aggressively reform our pension system in the city. We can't afford it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Martin. And then Mr. Bill Allen after Chris Martin.
Thank you, Council member. My name is Chris Martin. I'm CEO of AC Martin Partners. We're architects and engineers. Eric, I appreciated your history about this building. As many of you know, my grandfather was the architect... As many of you know, my grandfather was the architect of LA City Hall in 1927, and I was fortunate enough to lead the architectural team in its historic restoration and seismic upgrade. So fixing LA City Hall is kind of a specialty for us, but more physically rather than public policy, but I'll give a shot at it. First of all, I'm pleased to be here in front of all of you, and I know, I think I know every one of you personally, so I'm pleased to be here. You have a really tough job. I want to talk about the budget issue. And the chambers here, 2,500 businesses, 700,000 employees represented by these companies, and I'm really thrilled. We spent two days the other day with Miguel Santana, your CAO. Very impressive. He knows what's going on. He's got a tough road to hoe. He probably needs some protection, but I would encourage you to listen to him. He seems to be extremely competent. I'm going to tell you that from our business perspective, I've got 120 employees here in Los Angeles. Two years ago, I had 180. Of course, we're in the architecture engineering business. Construction and those related businesses are 40% underwater compared to where they were two years ago. So our 120 employees all have 25% minimum salary reductions. The good news is, we're in the black. We're going to succeed. We'll move on to fight another day. I have a billion-dollar project here in downtown LA. Jan Perry's district, Jan's over here right now, but I keep my eye on her all the time. And it's a billion-dollar project, the Wilshire Grand Project Office Tower and Hotel.
Chris, can you conclude, please?
My conclusion is, this is a long recession. Use the business community. We want you to be successful in these budget cuts, but look at employee contributions into the pensions to make this work. You have to cut deep, and it'll be a long time. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Bill Allen, followed by Francisco Uribe.
Thank you, council members. I'll be very brief. I just want to say on behalf of the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation how much we appreciate working with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce and each and every one of you to make the city of Los Angeles a more competitive, more vital, more vibrant, more diverse economy and get our people back to work. As Council President Garcetti said this morning, unemployment levels and underemployment levels are at unacceptably high levels, and we all have a moral obligation to work together as we've never worked together before to ensure that we can put people back to work in this city. We've talked a lot about the fact that we have a million more residents here than we did 30 years ago and about 100,000 less jobs than we did. We've got a lot of work to do. You all took a very courageous action in unanimously endorsing the LA County Strategic Plan for Economic Development a few months back and agreeing to work with us on the implementation of that plan. The LA Area Chamber has also taken a leadership role in the implementation of that. Who knows better about the small businesses in a community than their Chamber of Commerce? And we urge you to continue working closely with the chamber and with our organization in partnership so that we can implement those strategies that will ensure a better educated workforce, smarter land use, a true 21st century infrastructure as a foundation for a 21st century economy, a better quality of life for our residents, and a much more business-friendly region. We look forward to working with you. We thank you for the time this morning and really applaud your partnership with the chamber that is ongoing and will bear very positive fruit for the residents of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for being here. Jim Clark. Francisco Uribe, then Jim Clark.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the concerns of the business community. My name is Francisco Uribe, a government relations representative for The Home Depot and a member of the Board of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce. The Home Depot is a proud employer of more than 3,000 associates at 14 of the Home Depot stores throughout the city of Los Angeles. The Home Depot has been a proud and longtime member of the Los Angeles business community, generating jobs that offer competitive pay and benefits, providing health benefits for part-time and full-time associates. The Home Depot is an essential part of the Los Angeles economy, and as late as 2008 was generating 13 million annually in tax revenue. As a Los Angeles stakeholder who is concerned about LA's future, The Home Depot stands in support of the Los Angeles area's Chamber of Commerce advocacy priorities, which we've talked a lot about this morning, but just to highlight a few, we urge you to please make job creation a number-one priority, to ensure that new city ordinances help and not harm job creation, pass hiring tax credit, streamline LA's anti-job bureaucratic red tape, and fix LA's infamous permit and entitlement process. The city must develop a responsible budget that prioritizes essential services. We are here to partner with you in those endeavors, and we appreciate this opportunity. Again, thank you for listening to our concerns about the future of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Jim Clark, followed by Jane Pack.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I appreciate the time. I'm Jim Clark, Executive Director of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. We are proud members of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce and very active. As you know, I represent housing providers, all of whom are small business owners. You have a great opportunity that's coming up in the next two months with regard to the modification of the RSO. Our members not only provide housing, it's workforce housing, it's affordable housing, and we need to have protection from the restrictions that are only bared upon our industry. It's the rent stabilization ordinance. We want to protect the 3% floors so that there's a fair profit in our industry. We want to make sure that our safety net is kept intact so that we can keep up these older buildings. It's about protection of the housing stock here in this city. We need that protection. The 3% floor must remain. The other thing I want to talk about is job creation. That's what we're all here for. If we can modify the capital improvement program part of the RSO, we could open up a floodgate of new jobs. If we are able to get a fair return on our investments, and that proposal is 75%, and it's amortized over a certain length of time, the proposal is 10, we'd rather see it 5, you're going to open up the floodgate for jobs, painting jobs, roofing jobs, contractor jobs, those that are very important in this city. Those two things. Preserve the 3% floor, improve the capital improvement program. Keep that in mind the next couple of months. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Jane Pack, followed by Joe Sizik.
Good morning, city council, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you. I, along with 509,000 women-owned businesses in Los Angeles County alone, we generate over $126 billion in sales and employ over 667,000 Los Angelinos. We stand in support, along with our fellow board members on the LA Chamber, asking the city to develop a responsible budget that prioritizes essential city services and also immediate action to approve pension reform. A week ago, the National Association of Women Business Owners, we launched a survey, the final results with respondents of over 2,000 minority and women-owned businesses. These businesses represent over $11 billion in revenues alone, and 60% were women and 40% were men. These are predominantly businesses, over 78%, that have been in business over 11 years. These are very significant business owners that are not going anywhere. Half have been in business over 10 years, and 74% have been in business over six years. The survey itself is over 126 pages long, of which we are happy to provide a copy to every city council member. The most important thing is that there are three essential things that are hurting business owners today. They are not gaining access to capital. The certification and bidding process at the city level and this county and the state level is cumbersome and is hurting businesses, and our good faith effort is dysfunctional. We are asking the city council consider different ways that you can help us, along with the business community, find ways to improve business growth. These business owners want to grow. They want to hire full-time employees. They are currently cutting back on full-time and hiring more part-time employees, which, as we know, is not as sustainable for the economy. We do ask that the city council works directly with the LA Chamber, continue to work with the LA Chamber, with partners of the LA Chamber, to continue to look at ways that we can help support small businesses so that they can actually grow and hire full-time employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joe Sizik. No, Joe Sizik. Irene Deanda-Lewis, followed by Elise Buick.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Irene Deanda-Lewis. I'm the Executive Director of the Salvation Army Red Shield Youth and Community Center in the Pico Union District of District 1. The center has been there for over 60 years and really provides a refuge for the families in that neighborhood. I'm here to really support the priorities that have been presented to you by the LA Chamber of Commerce that would encourage job growth and really make an impact. As a nonprofit, we truly depend on the support of business. I know Elise will be speaking after me, but we have been a recipient of United Way Dollars since the inception and the development of the youth center. So when businesses reduce their staffing, dollars are reduced and nonprofits struggle. I see nonprofits coming forward to work in partnership with the city, and we become your extended arm of service to the neighborhoods that are in desperate need of services when the budget is reduced with the city. We become your important partner. And just to close, I just really want to illustrate that through our relationship with Ed Reyes, who's done a tremendous job in our neighborhood. We are partners. In the 19 years I've been at the Red Shield, his staff, and Ed has called me in a moment's notice and said, "Irene, I need your help," and we are there. And Ed, I will just thank you. You are never hesitant to call me, and I appreciate that, because through partnerships, through nonprofits and business, we will make an impact. We are all suffering with budget crunches, but together we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. After Elise Buick, Brandon, looks like Shami, Shamin. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Elise Buick. I'm the president and CEO of the United Way of Greater Los Angeles. I oversee a nonprofit in Councilmember Perry's district and a resident of Councilmember Labonge's district. And I'm also a board member of the LA Area Chamber of Commerce, and most importantly, a mother of two young sons who will be impacted by the decisions that you make, their future. So I would just like to emphasize a couple of points. One is that this is a chamber that works on many of the issues that you care about. We partner with them on workforce development, on education, and we are thrilled to be launching a five-year action plan to end chronic and veteran homelessness within five years. But what I would also like you to think about is what Irene said. For our nonprofits to thrive in this region, we need a successful and vibrant business community. So there's three priorities that we need your leadership on. We absolutely need to focus on jobs. We need your help in making LA more business-friendly, and we need a responsive budget that is fair to our workers in terms of pension and healthcare reforms, but ensures that we have the critical city services that we need, especially for our low-income families that many of us serve. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Brandon, looks like, the last name Brandon, I can't read your writing.
Mr. Chair, that's Shamin.
Shamin, okay, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brandon Shamin, president and CEO of Beacon Management Group, also a fellow Chamber Board Member. I wanted to once again acknowledge and thank the council for their recognition of the support of the small business and independent community in being able to create a vibrant and robust quality of life in Los Angeles. With that said, of course, what I want to do is make sure that I join in solidarity with my fellow Chamber Board Members as well as members at large in recognizing all the priorities that have been stated earlier. In addition, what I want to encourage you to be reminded of is the important work that is ahead of you through the Office of Economic and Business Policy Small Business Services Department that is created. And there are three priorities are ones that I'd like to echo as a 14-year-old CEO of a small business. One that focuses in on creating greater accountability, one that focuses in on trying to strengthen the monitoring that is so important that we try to accomplish for procurement reform, and of course, thirdly, making sure that the outreach takes place in all of the respective council districts where you know somebody who provides you a great restaurant, a dry cleaner, and of course, all the other services that you provide. So I think it is so important for us to be reminded in today's time that the small business community, as reports have shown, that actually do provide for local workforce hiring, are given each, every opportunity to be able to play according to a level playing field with procurement reform and City Hall, and of course, making sure that they have the ability to access capital that will create job creation that leads to a more vibrant economy. And finally, I want to leave this with you. I'm reminded of a famous saying that said, "Knowing is not enough; we must apply. Willing is not enough; we must do." So I implore you and encourage you to continue to find work. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
For the record, to make it crystal clear that he was not a 14-year-old, but he's been a 14-year head of this company. Thank you.
Thank you for that correction, Mr. Garcetti. Keen observation. John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, 1 million per year, successful seller requests. We have the honor of Bill Allen here today. Now, I'd like to quote his father, TV Steve Allen. When he greeted somebody, he used to say, "How's your bird?" So I'm asking the city council, "How is your bird?" I want to surprise people by thanking the chamber. You did an excellent job in your report. If CAO Miguel Santana, with his criminal record for drunk driving, had had this job, it would have cost the city about 10 to 20 times what we got out of the Chamber of Commerce. It was very, and incidentally, under the Brown Act, if it's distributed at the meeting, you must give a copy to the public. We would like a free copy to the public. We're very upset about the term "third-world airport" that Mr. Rosendahl said. Third-world is not a pejorative term. It is a racist term. When you refer to something as "third-world," you are saying that it's crap. You said it. You owe us an apology. And under the Brown Act, you do not have the right to interrupt me. Try reading it. I think that the Chamber of Commerce...
For the record, no one's interrupted you, but Mr. Garcetti just gave you a booklet from today's meeting.
I didn't hear you, but I don't care.
It's all right. I responded to your...
I'd point out that the questions were so long-winded. If you check, the questions by the city council were five times longer than the answers by the Chamber of Commerce. You were very succinct. Succinctness reads success. I could go on. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you. Take your five seconds.
And there's a booklet for you, Mr. Walsh, so you'll be able to be briefed on today's activities, on the environment of the city of Los Angeles, the economic situation, and the improvement of the economy for the people of the city of the angels. Arnold Sachs. Our next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Just for clarification, wasn't that the booklet that was available in the rotunda before the meeting? Couple of things I'd like to point out that really weren't discussed. The 12-2 program, that was the cornerstone of the mayor's initiative to streamline business. What exactly happened to that? And Councilman Labonge, you mentioned something regarding DWP being like 15% less the cost of Southern California Edison. Isn't that a business incentive? I mean, there are fixed costs and there are fluctuating costs that you control, but if you can save 15% on your energy and water, wouldn't that be a business incentive? How come the city doesn't capitalize on that? Downtown being an economic engine? Well, if you don't pay fees that your business would generate, like at AEG, and the gentleman mentioned the new development at Wilshire and Seven, they want to eliminate their bed tax. Who pays the fees that would be generated? Who loses out on that 15% or 14%? The film industry? The need for lowering of the fees paid? How about on the opposite side? There was a story regarding a court case and the Hollywood accounting that goes on, where millions and millions is generated in film revenue, but nobody makes a profit. And the pension program, where the private business is asked to take on more and more of the load while the government sector that's being carried complains that they're moving too slow because the people walk too slow. You know, yesterday, before the DWP meeting, there was a gentleman outside with a sign that said, "Leave my DWP alone." Well, if it's your DWP, pay your own pension.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sachs. Dr. Williams, our next speaker. Thank you. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Surino, also a retired member of the Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Surino, also a retired member of the El Surino Chamber of Commerce and current chairperson for the Business and Economic Development Committee of the L.A. 32 Neighborhood Councils. Did the neighborhood councils participate in this? I kind of doubt it. But let's go back. I would agree with Mr. Cardenas that the numbers seemed a little high, because I usually go by the number of empty storefronts that are along Broadway, Figueroa, Huntington Drive, and other streets within our northeast L.A. So I would highly recommend that you might try putting the sales tax generation along with the employment and average salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. We'll go to the San Fernando Valley for Donna Pierman in the San Fernando Valley.
Anyway, thank you for letting us speak on it, because I didn't understand. An economic study is a way to go after public employees' pensions. Public employees is also our taxpayers. It's not the right to go after the pensions of these hard-working employees. We need politician reform, not pension reform. Why would the people want to stay in Los Angeles with less benefits? We need to have people that are working, that love being in their jobs, and if you start going after their pensions and more of their benefits, these people are not going to want to stay. They're going to go with the cities that will have better benefits. And I need to tell businesses that the public employees did not cause your problems. So going after city employees is not the way to go. It's just because if one person gets less, doesn't mean another person gets more. What you need to do is go after the politicians. We got also, we have Villa Regosa, he gets three pensions.
Please stay on the subject. The subject is economic study, not being mayor.
The economic study of the pensions. I heard him talking about the pensions of the city employees, and we cannot do an economic study where it's going to hurt the city employees. That's not right. It's not going to help the businesses by going after city employees.
It's going to hurt them more.
It's going to hurt them more. So I also, I don't think that we, this is also spending a lot of money doing, giving this person. I don't know how much money this person is going to get for this economic study, but at the time of where we're having troubles, this is, we don't need another high-priced person getting more money. So I don't believe in this. Thank you.
Marian Vogler?
I'm not Vogler, I'm Fogler. Let me tell you something, folks. You're shooting yourselves in the foot, the businesses here, because you cannot expect welfare from the government. You know, you're looking at the pensions and trying to get them pay healthcare, you're looking at their pocketbook. You want blood out of the people who work here at the city, and of course, I have to vouch for DWP, too. You want money from them, too. We need to stand up together, folks, against the politicians who are doing this greedy thing against the will of the people, the voters, okay? They don't want businesses here. They want to dry it up for the CRA. The CRA is taking all your money. That's the one, folks, that you should be going after, not the pensioner people who are working here at the city. They work hard, and all of them are sworn officers and firemen, too, and women, who are out there, you know, and you cannot go after their pensions and healthcare either. You have no right to touch them, because they're working for you, the taxpayers. It's the politicians are the problem. They're picking on workers. We have labor rights, Rosendahl.
Economic study, economic study is the subject matter.
That is economic. Labor rights. We have a right to put people to work without welfare. We don't have, you have no right to cut into me, Mr. Zine. You work for the police department.
Economic study is the subject matter.
You should know better than that. You should know better what you're doing.
Economic study.
You are killing the economics here. You are killing it.
Economic study.
You are people, lame dogs, and you're out of work. You're not going to have no legacies. You're going to be remembered as worth people leading this city down to nothing, because you're going against the people. The people pay these people to work here. You have no right to touch their pensions and healthcare.
You're off the subject matter.
You have no right to touch it. You are destroying the economic center here.
You're off the subject matter.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Well, I say you are. Your time is now up. We're going to come back to the City Hall. Forsey Hogan Robles, our final speaker on this matter, and that will conclude this item number 24.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers.
Well, you've got five more minutes till afternoon.
Okay, I'll be very quick.
There you go.
I have very pointed on what I want to say. I am president and CEO of Community Financial Resource Center. We're a regional community economic development corporation, and we're also a job creator in low-mod income communities, which I think is really important based on this report. We're also members of the Chamber, of the L.A. Chamber, and so what I wanted to share was, I just recently left the Department of Water and Power Commission, and Mr. Labange alluded to it a little bit about DWP and not necessarily saying it was an economic engine, but I think an important economic engine within our region. One of the things I wanted to point out is, as we go forward as a nonprofit, we really are an extension, and I think the folks at United Way mentioned that, the folks at the Salvation Army mentioned that. If we can connect better, I think, with the city council, two CDFIs, there's a network of CDFIs in our region, it's really important that we are an extension of the work that's been done. CFRC was actually founded by Council Action back in 1992, under Mayor Bradley's administration, along with John Farrow, who then was the president of the council. And our work since then, we have actually delivered more than $10 million in microloans, average loan size about $78,000, to low and moderate-income businesses. Those businesses are really suffering during this economic turndown, and if we don't do what we need to do in order to make those businesses become a part of the economic fabric, then we're going to lose a whole generation of young people who are family members of those small business owners and not give them an opportunity to become a part of the economic mainstream. The last thing I want to say is, we really tried to push on a local bid preference policy, which I think is really critical. In order to do that, it would actually strengthen smaller businesses in order to access more contracts within the city of L.A. And so I would just like to suggest that the council look at implementing a citywide local bid preference policy that would not only work to strengthen contracting for micro and smaller businesses, but also those that are at the port and at LAX. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, this matter is before its for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And this will be a receive and file, I understand? Thank you. Mr. Garcetti? Well, we have a general public comment coming up next, but prior to that, I understand number 26 we want to move. Mr., it's hard to tell me who's, Mr. Cardenas or Mr. Carrats?
What?
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry. You both stood up. I didn't know, and there's no buttons. Go ahead, Mr. Carrats.
Yeah, I'd like to move item 26. I understand all the speakers have left, and I would just move the city attorney's recommendations.
Okay. That matter, number 26, Mr. City Attorney?
And if there's no desire to discuss this matter in closed session, I'll state what the city attorney's recommendation is. City Attorney's Office recommends that council approve the seeking of appellate review in the Holby-Westwood litigation as set forth more fully in Agenda Item Number 26.
On that matter, colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Very well. Okay, we'll now go to public comment. It is noon, and our first speaker is Lorraine Ornellis. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the council. I am Lorraine Ornellis, and I live in San Pedro, which is Councilwoman Janice Hawn's 15th district. I recently had the opportunity to view a two-hour documentary called "Los Angels at the Warner Ground Theater in San Pedro," one of the jewels of the Cultural Affairs Department, and it was sponsored by the Oklahoma College's Film Series. This documentary was directed by the gentleman who was responsible for the film "The Soloist" about the cellist on Skid Row. It dealt with the lives of some of the people who reside on Skid Row. During the question-and-answer period following the presentation, I promised the woman responsible for the showing, whose name is Susan Kloss, that I would speak before the council and encourage the members to avail themselves of the opportunity to view this presentation. I understand it is to be shown at the mayor's staff retreat, hence my appearance today. It was a moving experience, and I believe that more residents cared about their fellow man. We probably wouldn't have all of the problems in our communities. I consider myself a caring person, especially since I worked for the L.A. City Recreation Parks Department, and they thought I was one tough cookie, so they assigned me to recreation centers such as Nickerson Gardens in Watts, South Park, Harbor City, Normandale, and Vanning Recreation Center, where I had daily contact with gangs. I firmly believe that if you treat these young people in a proud and responsible manner, you can get them to change their minds. I actually had young people at Nickerson saying please and thank you to me when I addressed them. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ann Marie Kirby.
Yes, my name is Ann Marie Kirby. I reside in San Monica, California, which we know, and California. What I did is I started an organization called "We Can Live." It deals in the bum situation and the street people and low-income people having like food and resources for medical or whatever, you know, that they need to survive. And there's a parcel on Texas and Wesleyan, and it's just dirt there. And what I want to do is buy, I have like a tent from an army store. I use my social security check, you know, to feed like bums and people that need food and use the best and stuff like that. And I owe like maybe $500 more on the tent, but I'm thinking about three. So I want to put up the tent as like the office for a shelter to be on Wesleyan, Texas, in West LA. And the address is like 1200 Wesleyan, Texas. It's just a dirt lot, but it's locked. But I'm not going to like cut the lock and let people in, like myself and others, without, like there is the law. You can't just break into like anywhere and just sleep. And what I want to do is open this up and start it off little at a time to see how many come to me. And we, I, that's it.
Go ahead. Finish your sentence, please.
Yeah, I always make sure that whoever comes in, I preach the gospel to them and the ways of the law.
Okay.
But usually, I get a good response, and they all mind me.
Mr. Rosendahl's staff will discuss this matter with you. Thank you. Augustin Trillo?
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mr. President, council members. Thank you. I hear this morning many interesting things for the city of Los Angeles, multimillion programs, and I agree with that one, but believe me, just this is like a complaint. I speak in behalf of the winter people, handicapped people, and people who have to use their restroom. People in this corner, 7th and Broadway, people can go to the bathrooms. People go through the streets. They go to the alley to do their necessities. So my question is, the owner of the three restaurants, these three restaurants in one, the address is 700 South Broadway. The guy last week, the owner of the restaurant, he lacked the access, access for the elevator. Personally, personally, I called fire department, they cut those lacks. And personally, because I'm in the construction business, I take them out, these chains out. But in the presence last week, the owner of the building is in compliance with the city. So now, at this moment, at this point, this time, that entrance for handicapped people is no restroom, no handicapped people access. So I, this guy, the owner of the building, the owner of the building, they allowed to the city check out the place, but the owner of the restaurants, these three restaurants in one, he didn't allow nobody else. He say he have many politician friends. His name is Suri Barnes. He say he have a lot of millions to stop everybody. And in my presence, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a question.
John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, emailing at HollywoodDems, the E.M.S. at gmail.com, twittering at HollywoodDems. There are in the elevators in this building, City Hall, stickers that say 90-day temporary permit to operate an elevator. All over the city, all the buildings, libraries, they have not been inspected. When you take an elevator in this town, you're risking your life. Now, to make every Democrat hate the guts of HollywoodHighlands.org, we are the only media outlet in the state that has named who called Meg Whitman a whore, and that's Stephen Glaser, G.L.A.S.E.R., the campaign manager, ask Ann Gust, ask his wife. Now, to make every Republican in the state of California hate our guts, Griff Hosh V., Meg Whitman's son. You can see him in her new commercials, except he's 10 years old in the new commercials in the family portrait. He's 26 years old now. He were, and what did he do? He beat the hell out of his girlfriend. The arrest record, the police report is on our website, and he beat her up, broke her foot. Oh, did I mention she's Hispanic? She's a Mexican-American. Carly Fiorina, read what we said a month ago, she's hospitalized, about her physical, her life expectancy. She is, what is her long-term remission? We want doctors to know it. Has anyone remembered? I'm telling you right now, we had a senator die in office. Does anyone know his name? Claire Engel, that's his name. He died in office. Will Carly Fiorina die in office? HollywoodHighlands.
Oh, Walter Bectel.
Good afternoon. Yeah, I wanted to say you guys are considering the situations here with the Chamber of Commerce, and I heard some people coming up here and speak about rent stabilization ordinance. I guess I should reiterate, keep in mind that a lot of these people who supposedly, these nonprofits are supposedly helping, the people are not helping us at all. We were evicted from our hotel. We were initially, and right up until the last moment, told, and the city was told, and led to believe that it was temporary relocation. Right at the last moment, we were told we were permanently being relocated. That changes everything. They were able to secure funds in August of 2009, and after they secured funds, then they told us we were permanently being relocated. Under HUD rules and regulations, permanent relocation is entirely different. And if we can't move back is one thing. They're finding one loophole after the other, and they're saying that they had some kind of way to get around that, that they provided some housing, but you can't get into SRO housing unless you qualify under their rules and certain circumstances, some people who were-- Some people who were relocated from the Ford Hotel cannot get that housing at all. So we were supposed to get 60 days, 60 months, and that 40 months, 42 months relocation. We can never come back. And I said before, most of our rents are either doubled. Many, many people I know had their rents tripled. So just because they say they're nonprofit don't mean they really care about the people.
Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, Elsreno. Yesterday, just an update for a committee meeting. The Energy and Environment considered the lifeline subsidies. No, actually, the reduction of the amount for the lifeline subsidies. Why? Because they're looking for money. Somebody, somewhere is looking for money. It also said in the announcement of the issue, no fiscal impact. Well, may not be any fiscal impact, but if you're going to reduce the amount of money, it seems like you're going to impact somebody, and especially those on the lifeline subsidies. So we considered it. The person giving the presentation said that neighborhood councils have been involved, and that CD 14 was involved. Well, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council Board members did not know of it. They had never heard that there was going to be a reduction in it. Some members actually have relatives that are on it, and I recommended that they should make sure that they stay on it. But what's going to happen? Who's it going to affect? Low-income people, retirees, seniors, of which I'm one? So what will happen? Maybe they'll have to choose between medications and their utility and solid waste fees. I don't know. That's one of the problems. It seems that nobody knows what's happening to the lifeline subsidies. Fortunately, I'm not on it, so I don't have to worry about it. But I do worry about those people that are on it, and that may become homeless or have to go to another jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold Sachs.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Again, I'd like to discuss a little bit of what occurred yesterday with the council chambers being swarmed by all the employees of DWP. But what was really also amazing, that probably wasn't shown outside, was the number of trucks, vehicles, and different vehicles parked around the City Hall on Main Street. Must have been a hell of an emergency here to have all those DWP vehicles parked illegally on Main Street. So I'm wondering where the police were to issue citations. You know, if you stop on Main Street to ask instructions or to drop somebody off, usually a police officer will come up and say, you gotta move your vehicle right away. You can't sit here, you can't stop. But DWP brought employees down here. I was wondering, were they being paid yesterday, by the way, or do they get to make that time up on overtime? Because that's just the way their contract is. But to be able to block Main Street, park on red zones without being cited, what is, what is the policy? What is the police policy? Does somebody here at City Council know? Would Safety Committee know? Would the Utility Committee know? Somebody would know. And the arrogance of one of the workers to carry that sign, just completely, leave my DWP alone. Your DWP, take care of your own health care costs. Your DWP, contribute to your pension. And your DWP, get the drunk drivers off the road. Thank you for your time, answers, and attention.
Let's go to the San Fernando Valley, Donna Pierman.
Anyway, this is about voting. If you want people to vote, please consider having the mail-in ballot with a stamp post-paid. It would help the poorest constituents in this table. If you election is a very important one to vote, and people need, die to be able to vote. Let's show them they had not died of vain. It's important not to let politicians have a complete control over our money, except when they choose to not to, like the CRA and the developers. You need, yeah, take, I know, they take our state legislature and give it to developers and the MTA. It's not right. We need to go after, anyway, Prop 22, will destroy our city, will let the CRA have our money carte blanche. No finish, they won't finish, yeah, they will be in the lockbox. No finishing the Grand Avenue, they'll finish the Grand Avenue project, all the new projects along our transit corridor. We need to vote no on 22. Our city council is already owned by the CRA. We need to have politician reform, not pension reform. We need to vote no on Proposition 25. Our state politicians can write up laws that for their best interest and would pass on simple majority. Our politicians are against our employees blaming the city employees' pensions and health care, when the councilman, the CRA is missp, and the councilmen and the CRA is misspending our money and is travesty. Our politicians don't care about constituents either. Look closely, you will see Prop 22 and Prop 25 will be the politicians and their friends' interest, not our interest. We need to save our city. We need to vote down on Proposition 22 and Proposition 25. Well, no on 19 also, but these are the two important ones that is going to bankrupt our city. They're gonna, the politicians will be able to make all the decisions on where the money goes. We don't need to give it to CRA.
Mary Ann Fodler.
You give an ounce of gold, they want a pound of it. They want 10 ounces, they want 20 ounces. It's an enticement. It's human nature to want more, more, and more. You see, where they can find resources, money. You see, workers who really are working, they're the public employees, either middle-class people. You're not going after yourself, Rosendahl, you're jealous. They're all jealous. All the public doesn't realize that the private companies got rid of their benefits. That's one of the reasons why they cannot get any business off the ground, because they don't want to offer incentives for workers to stay and work there. These people are educated and trained. You're expecting to work without benefits and just be lucky to get paid and have a job? What, to pay minimum wage? While you people make 175-plus? You're an outrage. We need to go out to you, not pensions and reform, politician reform. We need to put politicians in reform. Period. 22. You understand what I'm saying is here, we need not to have 22 passed, Proposition 22. That would give a carte blanche, CRA to have a lockbox, folks, people who have been fighting for social security to have a lockbox. They're gonna have a lockbox over you. This is one is going to be creating communism. Businesses are going to be getting handouts left and right from the city government, from the CRA, to create businesses on the backs of the taxpayers and the work, city workers who aren't working for the taxpayers, by the way. These are taxpaying people also, they're paying taxes as well. Do not give, relinquish one iota of cent to Rosendahl's idea of 10% pension, 5% retiree health. That's a hot spot to us retirees to pay 5% on their health care. How dare you do such a thing, Rosendahl, being a Democrat, a liberal, gay right, when we don't even have labor rights here? What's going on here? I don't get a second over. I guess I know that for sure, that we have a right to gay rights.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment for today. There's been a request, colleagues, to take number 11, 12, and 13 together. There has been a public hearing on 11, 12, and 13. Mr. Weisar.
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to proceed or open it up for public hearing?
Well, we could, if we could do them individually, Mr. President, do 11 first, and then 12, and then 13. That way, we focus on each one, although they're interrelated, and we could do public comment first, if that's.
Go to the what?
Yeah, public comment first.
Okay, you want to open it up for public comment?
Right now.
It has had a hearing.
Oh, we could waive public.
We can, it's already had a hearing, unless you want to reopen it, but.
Can I reopen it, please?
Pardon me?
We, I'd like to reopen it.
Okay, without objection, seeing none, we will open it up for the public hearing, and then we will hear from the staff on this matter. The first person, Kathy Feng.
And you want CLA, CAO, city attorney, eventually, all the staff.
We're on item 11, yes.
And then I'm suggesting you invite.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Kathy Feng, and I'm with California Common Cause, and I wanted to support the motion to move item 11A to support vote by mail for special elections as well as neighborhood vote centers. We all know that the city has been faced with not only a budget shortfall, but also dismal voter turnout during a lot of city elections, in many cases, only in the single digits. And we think that this proposal addresses both of those problems by giving people a much easier way to access vote-by-mail ballots and return those ballots to the city, thereby helping with voter turnout, but also helping the city and taxpayers by having a more efficient way of running elections during special elections, moving to a neighborhood voting center process. We have seen this system be used in other cities like Denver, Colorado, where in their municipal elections, they've seen a bump up in voter turnout and also a real savings for taxpayers. So we urge the city council to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jody Epstein. Jody Epstein.
My name is Jody Epstein, and I'm a master of public administration student at the University of Southern California. And I am a student through the School of Planning, Policy, and Development, and thank you for your time today to address Prop 11 and 12 and 13. So I'm a native New Yorker who has chaotically searched campus for a voting and registration resource. Speaking for students, particularly for graduate students, we are not apathetic towards California election propositions or spending, and all of our energy isn't just trying to organize and gain support for Prop 19. Perhaps we would like to vote, and perhaps we would like to be more civically engaged, but how do we know who to believe and what issues are pertinent? And how do we know, speaking for my technologically savvy and somewhat obsessed media consumer peers, the candidates, although they have commercials, Facebook advertisements, and Twitter tweets, that they are truly concerned with economic development and job creation and placement? Perhaps voter apathy comes from an attitude of why does it actually matter? So-and-so is backed by this funding and has this number of advertisements. So-and-so will therefore win anyway on false pretenses. So what's our motivation? What motivates us of running around campus trying to find a voting and registration resource that is perhaps unreliable and to vote in an election already skewed due to funding and support of mass money donations from private corporations? We need fair elections to restore hope in young people, to make sure that all candidates have a voice. And in conclusion, we need to create easier ways to register students, including mail-in ballots and vote center options. So I'm just asking to increase my confidence in elected leaders and give me more resources to vote and register for election. Thank you.
If you'll remain there for a moment, Mr. Garcetti wants to get a photo of you. Did you get the photo, Mr. Garcetti? All right. Thank you. Sarah Hillsbury. Just trying to give a leap of opportunity for all, Mr. Garcetti.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Hillsbury with the California Participation Project. We're based at Community Partners, and we're a new initiative that provides resources and trainings to nonprofits in Los Angeles County to help them integrate civic participation into their ongoing work. If nothing else, put this poster up and let people know when to vote. We're part of a national network. You can find us at NonprofitVote.org that wants to expand the role of nonprofits in voting in election. And why were we founded? We're founded because our democracy is tremendously challenged by gaps in voter participation by age, income, education, younger, lower-income, less-educated voters participate at much lower rates, and these gaps lead to great disparities in our involvement in our government, public policy, and other kinds of civic participation. While many issues affect participation, sometimes it's just voter education on the process in voting in election. But most importantly, it is there are still many challenges to people's voting rights and procedural barriers. 11, 12, and 13 will do so much to change, to make, bring more democracy to this city. Specifically on 11, by combining voter centers and voting by mail, it will allow greater flexibility for people. Ranked choice voting will give greater voice and allow voters to really say who they want to lead them. And finally, I won't be, because I'm busy with the election, I want to just quickly say about 13, updating the charter to allow for stronger campaign finance reform will not only diminish the special interests involvement in our politics, but will bring new people into our government, and we'll see new faces at the table of public policy. So for all those reasons and more, we urge you to move forward with 11, 12, and 13. Thank you so much.
Clarissa Wu.
Clarissa Wu had to step out, and we'll submit her letter for the council.
Very well. Sergeant Arms will take that from you. Anjuli Kronheim.
Yep. Hi, I'm the LA organizer with California Common Cause, and we support 11, 12, and 13. However, there's a long list of organizations who have endorsed this proposal and can't be here, so I was going to read a little bit from them. Maria Elena De Rosa, you guys have the letter. But the L.A. County Federation of Labor is in favor of legislation initiatives that seek to increase voter turnout in L.A. County. Today, the city council is poised to closely examine and support three such measures authored by council members Weisar and Garcetti, moving towards vote-by-mail elections, instituting a system of ranked choice voting, and lifting the massing funds cap in order to allow more candidates to participate in elections. So taken together, these initiatives will result in an unprecedented effort by L.A. City Hall to engage in increased voters' interest and participation in their government. Another organization is the Los Angeles Coffee Party Chapter. They strongly support the Voters' Bill of Rights. The members of the coffee party, both nationally and locally, believe in engaged citizenship and in the principle of one person, one vote, not $1, one vote. And lastly, the Green Lightning Institute sent a letter that you guys have. So the Green Lightning Institute is committed to building a multi-ethnic, pro-democracy movement for political reforms that will institute standards of equality, accountability, and justice in the democratic process. So the ultimate goal is creating civic participation by the nation's growing communities of colors. They support the adoption of these local reforms that enhance and encourage voter participation. The other organizations that couldn't be here, obviously the ACLU, the Youth Beat Collective in the Valley, and the National Korean-American Service and Education Consortium. Thanks.
To the San Fernando Valley, Donna Pierman.
No, she didn't put in a card, I did. Oh, you did? Oh.
Oh, okay.
I have a card from.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, the only thing I wanted to speak on this, on the ballot issue, is that I hope you do have an easier way to do the mail-in voting. And as I said in the beginning, and, yeah, as I was saying in the beginning of the public comment, that one way to do on the mail-in thing is when they ask for a ballot, is that people wouldn't have to put a stamp on it, because then sometimes we'll stay there for weeks before people will remember that they didn't put a stamp on it. And if they had gotten it right away, they could have just filled it in and put it in the mailbox. If you want to be, really be able to have a lot more voters and voter participation in having these mail-in ballots, that is one way to go. And a second way to also is let's move up that date a little bit, so that the people can mail in that card. And I don't think that it really takes that long a period of time, over a week, to be able to mail to people the ballots. A lot of people like to do this mail-in ballot, and this is the way to go to make it easier. A lot of people like to do this mail-in ballot, and this is the way to go to make it easier. Now I'll let Miriam Fogler speak.
Miriam Fogler.
Fogler. I've been out there registering people to vote since I was 18. And let me tell you, folks, a lot of people are discouraged because of the way the apathy is because of the politicians, the way they're doing their job. It's a little FFF. Let me tell you, it's not all just people not wanting just to vote because of the politicians, the way they're treating the public. And you can see by where they are. The way to bring voter turnout is by bringing in the positive leadership and having people act positive in the public, having leadership, and not to be conspiring and like Prop 22. Okay, you need to read your ballots, okay? Look at your book. I know what you're going to say, oh, it's too hard, therefore you're going to vote no. Well, you need to vote no if you see that it's, you can see it right there. It's all written out there. The beginning part of it's very easy, it's very clear. It tells you all right there how it's going to be all going for the knockbox, the CRA. It's right there. It's all written in print, English. Now unfortunately, we have people who have very poor skills, English skills, people who are not educated, you know, and are more, you know, that don't have the understanding to be able to discern this stuff. So what we need to do is just basically make it very simple in the books. And that's what they're trying to do here, and I'm proud of that. And so if you're not sure, vote no, okay? It's better to vote no and be safe than vote yes and then taking a risk. But you should check it out, make sure, because I'm telling you right now, that's exactly what's saying, Proposition 22 is very, very bad. It's the most negative thing I've ever seen on the ballot. Number 25 is also bad, folks. It's like they give you half good and then half bad. This is why people don't want to vote. They have to pick between the two, worth of the two evils.
All right. Thank you for your comments, and we are now back to Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. 11, 12, and 13 came about through, as a result of some forums that we had on elections and how we can improve what we have in the city of LA. Everything that we do, there's always room for improvement. And this was what was recommended by some of the leading experts that work on these issues each and every day. And on this item alone, number 11, as you know, the concept is very simple. Right now, if you want to vote by mail, you request for a ballot, the ballot sends it back, they send you a ballot, fill out your choices, and send it back in. What you want to do is cut out the middle person. In other words, we don't think we need that extra step. And if we don't need that extra step, we think that voter participation in the city of Los Angeles will actually increase. Other places that have adopted this, such as Oregon, Burbank, the voter rates have increased. And if you look at some of our numbers, in the city of Los Angeles, we have some of the most dismal voting participation rates anywhere in the country. I've heard some concerns as we put this out there. Some people have mentioned that they feel comfortable and it's traditional that they've always gone to a voting place. Well, let me make it quite clear, we're not going to delete or get rid of all our polling places. People will still have the option to go vote at a place if they so choose. But here, under this structure, everyone will get their ballot in the mail, they could either mail it in, or they could go to the booth and vote, or they could take their ballot to the booth. We anticipate that some savings can be realized under this proposal because we won't need as many polling places. We anticipate that more people will start to vote by mail so that there won't be as many polling places as necessary. Like anything, it's something that we don't want to jump into right away. It would be a huge change. We do need education, both for the public and for ourselves. So working with the city clerk's office, we have proposed that this would take place for a special election and not go citywide. The clerk has informed us that we don't have the capacity to move towards this citywide and that we don't have the voting equipment, nor staffing, nor the funding. But we do believe that if we go to a special election right now and do it first there, that we can realize some savings by not having as many voting places out there. What's before you today is a motion that asks us to move forward with this and put it on the March ballot. It does require a charter change. It also asks that the majority of polling places be maintained for the first few uses of vote by mail so that people can eventually get used to this. It also asks that the clerk be required to assess the local concerns of community leaders and other affected stakeholders. It also asks that the clerk be requested to increase funding for education. It also asks that it not be utilized if it would incur higher costs. And finally, it asks that the vote centers be placed in locations that are easily accessible to all, close to major transportation lines, have ample parking available, and be fully staffed. Folks, I think if we are looking for ways for more voter participation, this is the first of other steps we can be taking. But I think this is one of the smallest steps we could take at this time, and hopefully we can put this on the March ballot. Thank you.
Mr. Alakon.
Yes, this is obviously an intriguing idea, but I want to ask a number of questions. How many jurisdictions have actually implemented vote by mail, elections similar to the one being proposed?
We can get you the number of all vote by mail, the neighborhood voting centers. I don't, I think that is our idea.
Okay, so is it dozens or two?
Tom can answer that question, but...
Mr. Alakon, statewide or nationwide?
Nationwide.
You know. We don't know offhand. We'll have to find out for you. We know, as Mr. Weezer stated, that the state of Oregon is currently all vote by mail.
Okay.
There are other jurisdictions, but Burbank is the closest local entity. But as far as everybody in the nation, we can find that out for you, but we don't have it on the top of our heads.
Now, we know historically that vote by mail tends to reflect a certain classes of people as opposed to other classes. And obviously, one of the obvious questions is what kind of effect would this have potentially if those same trends were to occur? Would it have a diminution effect on minority participation, on youth participation, or... Because they don't typically use the vote by mail process as much as other categories that folks do.
I think I understand your concern, Councilman, and that's why when we analyzed all vote by mail, whether it be practiced citywide or specifically in single district elections such as the vacancy we had in CD II and CD V, that we also offer as a companion the in-person voting experience. So there will be a limited number of neighborhood voting centers where people who choose to vote in person can go, or if they wish to drop off their filled-in ballot, they can still do so, so...
But you would be reducing the access to polling places that they've been accustomed to?
The idea is that the, a more minimum amount of neighborhood voting centers does drive down costs. However, Mr. Weezer's motion, which he introduced today, asks that the number of those neighborhood polling places be maintained at least at a majority level for at least the first few uses.
A majority meaning half as many?
Exactly.
So in other words, the access would be diminished for people that wanted to vote in a polling place?
There would be...
Because they would have to travel a little further.
A little further.
They may have to walk into other gang turf, I mean, excuse me, they might have to walk into other neighborhoods and might not want to vote. And so has there been a legal analysis of this in terms of the potential challenges in court by advocates for voting rights groups?
Hareet Travetti from the city attorney's office. As a charter city, we have a substantial measure of autonomy over our own elections, and we can, through a charter change, implement this type of change. Other cities have gone to all vote by mail voting through charter changes, most notably Burbank. There have been concerns, as you mentioned, from various sectors of the community that want polling place operations to maintain themselves, that this not infringe on their rights to vote. And we think that although it has been upheld by the courts, all vote by mail voting has been, for example, we do assessment district elections and other elections, all vote by mail. It's advisable to maintain a certain number of polling place operations, as is contemplated in this motion, and to provide minority language assistance there as required by the Voting Rights Act, and do an extensive amount of voter outreach and education to ensure that voters are aware that they can vote at these neighborhood voting centers, and also work with the postal service, excuse me.
Do you have an opinion as to whether or not this measure would be challenged legally?
I don't know whether it would be challenged legally.
Have there been any, anybody expressing that they would consider challenging it legally?
I believe there are some letters in the file from organizations against the measure, but I don't...
Well, are they significant organizations, or is it just, you know, small organizations? Could you mention?
There's significant organizations.
Could you mention them, or...
I think Delaio had a letter in the file that might have been...
The National Association of Latino Elected Officials?
I believe so. I'm not sure if that was specific to ranked choice voting or vote by mail. I believe it was...
What other, any other groups?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. Members, as much as I'm confident that Mr. Weezer's goal is to increase voter participation, I don't think the, I don't think the city is geared up and ready for this kind of change. And if we were going to move in that direction, I'd be fearful that any pilot projects might be just as vulnerable to challenge as any other, in fact, maybe more vulnerable to challenge because a constituent in one district deserves every right as a constituent in another district. And if we change the election process in a particular district different than another district, I believe that would be fodder for lawsuits. So I think we need to watch the nation as it evolves in this regard. We all want more people to vote, there's no question about it. But we don't want to, in an effort to allow people the more opportunities to vote, actually diminish the vote, voting opportunities for certain classes of people. And so I think this is a rush to judgment, and we should just slow down and over time consider it, but just keep an eye on what is going on in other states and other jurisdictions and other cities, particularly those that might face challenges legally.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Ms. Han.
Thank you.
And by the way, the Q buttons are now working.
Thank you. You know, I said this the other day in committee, and I was willing to vote to, you know, move this forward so the full city council could debate this, but I had a lot of issues with this. I was the one that said, I think people don't vote because, you know, they think their vote doesn't count. I think people don't vote because they're frustrated with the system. I think people don't vote because they're tired of negative advertising. I think, you know, people don't vote not because it's not convenient, because they're very frustrated in what they see as a political system that kind of shuts them out. So I'm not convinced that vote by mail actually increases voter participation, although I know there's some statistics out there. I am also one of those that feels very strongly that there are a lot of people who love voting in person. It's a tradition, it's patriotic, it's, they like walking in and talking to the ladies and a few men who are working at the polling places, they bring them donuts. I mean, it's a real American tradition to walk in and vote. And currently, is it, am I correct, anybody can vote by mail right now? Anyone can ask to vote by mail.
It's a voluntary request on the citizen's...
And also, aren't there permanent vote by mail options? I know my mother is a permanent vote by mail. She always gets about. So currently, anybody who wants to can vote by mail. I think this is a huge leap. Los Angeles does not vote by mail in the percentages that some of the other cities and counties do. I would like to see us take a gradual step, which I think you're wanting to do, Councilmember Weezer. But I feel like, you know, putting the burden on the city clerk to access the concerns of the community leaders, I'm not sure how that's going to happen. Not scheduling a vote by mail election until we're sure that it doesn't incur higher costs, I'm not sure how that happens, particularly in a special election. Special elections happen quickly. Special elections are special because they're out of the ordinary. Something happens, someone dies, someone moves on out of the, it happens quickly, they're usually a shorter period of time. And I'm not sure in that instance, are we really going to be able to assess community concerns? Are we going to really be able to access or assess how much it's going to cost? So what I'm wondering, and maybe it's a cost analysis, but could we, in one election, calculate the cost of mailing out ballots to everyone? Even in a special election, could you, could you keep the system the same? Could you keep the polling places the same and just mail out ballots to everyone and see? I kind of would like to have a test case on if we do take the middle person out, if we do mail ballots out to everyone, let's see how it works. Do people really vote by mail, or would they continue to vote in the polling places? And I just am very much against reducing the number of polling places. I just think that's the wrong way to go about this. I don't even like changing the name to voting centers, neighborhood voting centers. I think that's going to confuse people. People get confused right now when their polling places change. When people's polling places change, there is a lot of confusion. When people move, there's a lot of confusion. So I think to change the name, reduce the number, I think will really frustrate a lot of voters. I had an instant poll, Tom, last night at the restaurant I was in, and everyone there was against this idea. So, you know, I think...
I must have been at a different restaurant. Everybody there supported her.
Yeah, I know. So I would like to see what it would cost to just mail out ballots to start with and see if that brings in more voters.
Councilwoman, we have, we do have the costs for citywide on a special, single district. As you stated, it would cost more because you would be incurring the additional printing costs and the additional mailing costs to mail the ballot. You would also have a ballot control problem. Once you mail out the ballot, I think one thing everybody does need to be aware of is to vote at the neighborhood voting centers, you would have the option of filling out your ballot, mailing it in, filling out your ballot and dropping it off, or bringing your ballot to the voting center and voting on it there. But if you did not bring your ballot with you, you would have to vote provisionally.
Okay.
So we would be doing a lot of provisional voting, so that would increase the cost of the canvas, et cetera. Citywide, if we use the 2009 municipal budget, which was a $16.9 million, so again, this is citywide and not just a single district, to hold a regular late election, we're talking about anywhere from $19 to $23 million.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Ms. Han made a very good point. There's certain joy in life, joy is walking into a polling place and you see the people that you've seen for years and years as you vote. That's an experience that's real touching. What you have done recently to the office of city clerk, you've combined multiple precincts in a gym at a Los Angeles recreation and parks facility that brings more people together, and it's a voting polling place, but people now know consistently where to go. For a number of years, because of challenges of county and city-state, whatever, there's been runarounds of where the polling places are. We have had that complaint, where is it today? And so that's a positive measure, a positive step forward on that. I don't like the idea about ranking. I don't know, I still can't put that around. I know, but I wanted to mention that, I wanted to rank it in, that was my second thing I wanted to say about. But our city's facilities, see, someone should be at that table in front of us right now who all they care about is not what the issues are, but how to get people and market it into places to vote, to encourage them. All I could express is every time, and I'm 57, so I was 18 when the Voting Act came in 1972 in the first election, and I voted in every election that I have except once I was out of the city for a longer period of time. It's an honor to vote, but to have places, polling places, to use our fire stations, our libraries, our parks, there should be total cooperation for people to be able to go. parks, there should be total cooperation for people to be able to go there and assist them. But also enhance the marketing effort on a mail, on a mail if it's available now. I remember you had to really have some documentation to get a voting ballot. Mail it now. Also, maybe let's look. Burbank does it. Burbank is a smaller city. Berkeley does it, a smaller city. I don't know what they do in European cities. I think that would be something to look at to see what it is. But I think it's important to, to do that. I think it's an important thing. If everything's done so technical, I think there's something real about it. So if you could have both, this is what I would say. Mr. Weezer, I appreciate what you're saying on this here, but I, I'm not 1,000% behind it. I appreciate the League of Women Voters, but I'm not 1,000% and I want to have more study on it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Labonge. Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. One thing I think in looking at all of the three items, this is the one I thought was closer, that you could maybe work, work it out, at least on the single issue ballot. But one of the concerns I have is that if we keep a similar number of voting locations, we're pretty well eliminated your savings. And so we're not a break even. We may be costing more. And then I would think that in order to move forward on this, we'd have to do a tremendous amount of education so that people would understand it's not a sample ballot, it's your real ballot. Because I can just see the first several rounds of that, people will handle that ballot like they do their sample ballot, and then they'll wonder, where am I supposed to go vote? And so those are two issues that I'm very concerned about in addressing. I agree with you that doing it citywide, it's absolutely impossible, not only on cost, but just the variety of ballots you'd need. You'd almost have to have a city clerk at every polling location and so, a clerk's office. So my concerns are in the sense of reflecting on the community that I represent. As Ms. Hahn said, a lot of people cherish the idea of going in and punching the hole in there. The other concern I have is that we've had so many ideas about changing voting and none of them have caused people to come in in greater numbers. We had something called, you know, term limits and we're going to get all fresh faces and people are going to come in. We're going to have all of these things. But we saw in November, the thing that people came in to vote because they were enthused about a candidate. That's what gets people in. It's either an issue or candidate. It's not all these artificial things that we try and then next thing you know, they don't work and we keep them in place and we try another group of them. So I just think that our effort, and I know it's cost money, but our effort really should be as a city to get people out to vote. I mean, that should be the big push every time there's an election. What can we do to get people out to vote? Now, being in elected office, we all have to admit, part of the strategy of running for office is to suppress the vote. So on the one hand, you stand up and democracy is the greatest thing in the world, get people out to vote. When you go into your campaign office, you say, how do I keep these people from voting? It's contrary to what we're all talking about. And so I think we have that, that imbalance of strategy of getting elected versus as a non-elected official getting people out to vote. But I don't know what the cost would be to go forward on really an education on every election, how do we exceed what we've been doing, just to encourage people to get out to vote and telling them, because I find in my committee, most people, as long as it's been around, they're not aware of a couple of things. They're not aware of the provisional ballot. They actually leave polling places, going, searching for their polling place. And the other one they're not familiar with is this whole issue of what would prevent you from voting, because many people believe if you ever get arrested, you'll never vote again. And to educate them on those issues that eliminate those hindrances, in my judgment, will cause a greater benefit than what we come up with as far as another way to, to change the system. So again, I thought when I looked at it earlier, that was the closest of all of them. But after reviewing it, I just don't think that it will serve what our tennis.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. I think, if I've heard folks write, I think there's, there's an agreement that if, or understanding that if there were as many precincts as there exist today, if everybody got a vote by mail, and remember, this is just for special elections, so these don't happen that frequently. And I have some data to kind of answer some of the questions that have been put forward, that people would feel comfortable if that protection was there, except for the one good point that Mr. Parks brings up, which is that it would cost some more than what we currently pay. That said, I think in Mr. Krikorian's election, how much did, under budget were we in that election?
About $300,000 to $400,000, I believe.
So, you know, we could do it still for what we're budgeting these days. Obviously, we save some money there and potentially do both the vote by mail, everybody gets that ballot in these special elections, and keep open as many precincts as you'd normally have. And I think that would go a long way in addressing a lot of people's concerns and I certainly would be supportive of that. You know, in Oregon, it was interesting. It didn't impact communities of color negatively. And a lot of people thought it would be, to Mr. Alacon's point, there was about four or five different studies on it, thought that it would skew more Republican than Democrat. What was nice is that it actually skewed evenly. It wasn't more Democratic, so nobody could say this was just a way of getting out more liberal voters, or the opposite, more conservative voters. And part of that, they said, was, yes, while on one hand, sometimes more conservative voters already vote by mail now, those that it would expand to are the ones who don't automatically get something and they're less conservative sometimes, but that, you know, the new conservatives that weren't voting before balanced that out as well. So they found in a number of different studies that were done, University of Oregon did one, a couple voter centers, that it was, it was a wash. Now, in terms of how much it increased voting, in Oregon, it's kind of different because they're doing this for all their elections. So it's tough, it's really apples and oranges. But it did increase, they estimate it probably had an impact of about 10% in a regular election higher. But they said the smaller the election and the smaller the electorate, the bigger impact this sort of system has. So if we are talking about doing this for those special elections, which Mr. Labonge went through, Mr. Krikorian has gone through, which Mr. Cardenas, I believe, went through, I think if anybody else did here. Anyway, those, we would have much bigger turnout. And they, they say it would disproportionately make those actually count so that in those districts, which are oftentimes disenfranchised districts, what you are getting is in communities that are lower income, you actually get more people out to vote where you don't usually. I think it's pretty appalling for all of us when we see how low the voter turnout is, but I do echo your predecessor's predecessor, Frank Martinez, who I think when he did the work, looked and he suggested, I think, that this would be a smart way of moving forward, but the most important driver of an election is what's on the ballot. What's on the ballot is the main driver. But where we can get more people there and where we can do it in what we currently budget, I think that is a positive thing. And I think that as long as everybody had that opportunity to go into their precinct and drop something off for the first experiments of it, I think we could have something that protects people from that right, which has been earned by so many people for so many years. But also, while Naleo, I think, had a letter of opposition against it, Southwest Voter was for it and, sorry?
No, you're right.
Oh, Naleo didn't anymore. That was an earlier iteration of it too. So, so we've seen, you know, civil rights groups too, say, you know, go forward with the experiment. And I think doing this for a special election would still be a smart thing and so I rise in support of it.
From the great ninth district, Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I did have a pretty exhaustive meeting, or exhausting meeting, with a gentle person who is the head of the League of Women Voters. And a couple of questions that I had. You know, in, in the ninth district, we actually already have some precincts that are 100% vote by mail. And is there anything that prohibits us from asking the organizations to join with us now to encourage people who might not otherwise vote to become permanent vote by mail participants?
No preclusion.
We can do that. Okay. We can talk about how, I don't want to use up all my time on that. So I wanted to highlight that that already exists and I'm not sure what the difference is between that and, you know, what is being proposed here, other than this, this is a smaller demonstration project for special elections only. Now, I also had a question about voter centers. And before I go into that, I noticed some people shaking their heads about the polling places and people actually going to vote. And I think we need to remember, I know Janice understands this, I know Bernard and Herb understand this, any, any area that has a high concentration of elderly African-American voters who have come to California, particularly from the southern states, have a memory, a terrible memory of having to pay poll taxes, being denied the right to vote, the simple act of being able to go and take your ballot and fill it out and put it in the ballot box. I know that I was raised with that tradition when my mother actually took me inside the polling place so that I could watch her vote. I did that with my child too, because that was instilled in me. And for some people, it's a pretty precious and simple act that, you know, the sanctity of that needs to be respected. I am loath to even encourage the collapsing of polling places because it's very disorienting to people who are elderly, particularly on Election Day, and they often call us in a panic saying, where's my polling place? Can we get a ride? Can you help me? But I, I understand that the cost effects of that, we can do a better job of publishing that in advance, your polling places now at X, Y, fire station, school, or whatever. And of course, the questions of accessibility continue to be a challenge for us. But this neighborhood voting center, I wanted to know more about the distinction between that and an actual polling place and how you make sure that people don't get confused by that.
I believe we made the distinction in terminology because generally when you walk into a, into a polling site, you expect to be handed a ballot and walk into a booth and vote, and then have it go through the machine. It tells you if you've over or under voted, and then it goes into a, into the ballot drop box. A neighborhood voting center, again, assuming that there are not one at every polling, I mean, again, assuming there are fewer precincts and that they've been combined, you would walk in, if you didn't have your ballot with you, you would have to vote provisionally. So you would still be, you would be filling out an envelope, in either case, whether it's a vote by mail envelope or the provisional ballot envelope, you'd be putting in a ballot, it would not go through the machine and then it would, but it would then go into the box. The other distinction is, is the only thing we would be able to count on the actual Election Day are those that we had already received in the mail. All the others would be counted, they just would not be counted that night. They would be counted in the canvas.
Okay, I've run out of time. I'll press my button again, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perry, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to think of Ted Williams, you know, I've been fighting for campaign reform for 40 years and we've gone nowhere. And frankly, right now, the special interests have strangled the political process. Also, we have no real television in this town or anywhere else that informs and educates and connects people to the issues enough so they know how to vote. Just want to say that as a statement. It's a depressing set of affairs. And I wish a lot of the folks in the League of Women Voters and Clean Money spent their time and energy in forcing the media, which is owned by the public, the airwaves, to do more to really inform, not these 30-second crazy garbage spots that we see that are an insult to the intelligence. As a backdrop, the cost of this, what would we do if we vote yes today? We put something on the ballot? And what does this mean? Special elections for direct mail? Explain it to me.
It would be for single district vacancies. So that there would only be one ballot type so that the same ballot would be in every neighborhood voting center in a specific district.
And it would force people to vote by mail? Or will they still have the option to go vote normally like they would?
They could take their ballot with them to the voting center and vote on it at the site and then put it into the envelope.
I see. Who's doing that in the country right now like that?
We don't know of anyone doing neighborhood voting centers. The reason that we proposed the neighborhood voting centers was so that people could still go to the polls.
Oh, Denver?
I've corrected information, Denver apparently has neighborhood voting centers.
What about Portland? Or I thought Oregon had some of this.
They're all vote by mail.
They're all by mail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's hear that. Oregon is all by mail. There's no polling centers anywhere?
Correct.
And how long has that been in operation and how has that been going? And what's the percentage of the votes and all of that and the costs?
Early 2000s.
Well, if you know it, come on up. I want to know what's going on in a state that has done it by mail, so we can see if we can learn something from something like that.
Tom Rindell from the Election Division. I did observe elections conducted in Multnomah County, which is, includes a part of Portland. The methods that they use, of course, are that the entire state is vote by mail. They do not have neighborhood voting centers. What they do instead is they have drop boxes in government facilities and they have a staff of people who, for several days prior to the election, while these drop boxes are made available, circulate and pick up ballots so that they can be tallied.
How long have they been doing it? And is it cheaper than what we do?
They have, they began it in the early 2000s for statewide vote by mail. In terms of costs, they state that it is a savings. However, to compare it against what we do, I, I'm not able to make that comparison.
Okay, I appreciate that very much, what you just said. So what we would be voting on today if we said yes, is putting something on the March ballot that would say, in a district, the 15 districts, if what, somebody dies in office or quits or gets kicked out?
Any vacancy, yes. Any.
Vacancy for what? Just council?
Counsel.
Just the city council?
What we're also envisioning too, Mr. Rosenthal, is that it would not be obligatory, but rather permissive, so that the clerk would study the situation, take into consideration cost, population, whether or not a county or state election was coming up closer. And then we would make a recommendation to the council, and then the council would have the final say on whether to conduct that election in a vote by mail plus neighborhood voting center style. So it is, it is a permissive, it is a relaxation, but it is not obligatory for the council to do it.
So this gives us an option that we don't have now. It doesn't mean we're going to vote by mail. It just means that we, we could experiment with it if we wanted in a given district, if the issue arose of someone.
That's my understanding. You read to me, correct?
Yes, that's right. The motion, I think, is to have an option in single district vacancy elections that would otherwise be a standalone election, for example, for the clerk to make a recommendation whether to conduct that election with this methodology, and then the council would have the say of whether to actually call that election as a vote by mail election with neighborhood voting centers.
Okay, so then if we say yes to this, we're basically giving ourselves a potential option to maybe do this in a given district. And we as policymakers would make that decision on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, or not.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of this measure and comment on a, on a few of the issues that have come up. I think that I, what Ms. Perry said about the tradition of, of going to the polling place rang very true for me and I appreciate that very much. And I always do that too, out of ritual. But one of the problems, I think, that we're having in maintaining those traditional polling places is that it's increasingly difficult to find locations. It's increasingly difficult to get sufficient number of volunteers to work as poll workers at those locations. And as a result of that difficulty, polling places do move around, causing more confusion than we would have if we had fewer locations that were more reliable, election to election, in the form of these neighborhood voting centers. And in terms of impacts on less regular categories of voters, new voters, young voters, recent immigrants, those categories of voters who, who have traditionally not been high absentee voter populations, haven't been high percentage voters in general, I would suggest that, that the absentee ballot process actually is a more welcoming, easier way for them to become empowered than asking them to go to polling places. We're hearing reports now throughout the country of, of right-wing groups that are going in as poll monitors into polling places and attempting to intimidate immigrant voters and new voters by being there present and, and trying to evaluate their credentials and so forth. That is eliminated if those people are encouraged to vote by mail. We don't have that intimidation factor. We don't have the factor of unfamiliarity with the process because it's a simple thing when you can do it from the, from the kitchen table. And I think that we also have a problem, especially with our immigrant voters in a city, in a polyglot city like this, of finding sufficient poll workers who are conversant with multiple languages and can help people through the, the process. That is an intimidating factor about the polling place for many immigrant communities as well. So I think that we avoid many of those problems by moving to an all absentee ballot process. It seems to have worked very well in our neighboring city in Burbank. Voter turnout did increase. We haven't had the kinds of problems that people are concerned about. So I think we should move forward with this and I think it will have a positive impact. On all of the, the very legitimate concerns that people expressed, I think those concerns are actually dealt with by moving forward with this process. It makes the process easier and. It makes the process easier and it doesn't eliminate the ritual aspect of going to the polling place. If you want to still do that, you can do it, you just might have to go a little bit farther to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. Mr. Weisar, follow up, Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, this is the first time we discussed this as a full council, and there's some very legitimate concerns and issues raised, and it's a very good discussion, I believe. And the two main issues that were expressed, at least if I could summarize them, one is the impact on minority populations and what does that mean? And I know, I want to thank Mr. Arcon, who is always bringing up those issues and raising those issues. And I think those, the data tells us in those places where they have implemented this is actually increased minority participation, not decreased it. And let me ask Kathy Fang to come up here if she could address that issue. The other issue as well about the, if you want to call it ritualistic, the practice of going to your voting booth, if we were to say that if we keep the polling places as they are now and we still have the full vote-by-mail, would our cost increase? I mean, we're not going the back and forth, right? We're not selling the postal going and the materials that we get. So we have savings from that, that we don't have to request and send back, but we keep the same amount of polling places. Have we done that analysis? What's the cost if we do full vote-by-mail and keep the amount of polling places that we have now?
In a single, we have the information citywide, it'll be more expensive.
It will?
Yes.
And why is that? Because you still have the cost of operating them, but there's an increasing cost of sending everybody a ballot, correct?
Yes, because you're doubling your methodologies. You're running two types of election methodologies at the same time. So it would be, in a single district, if not as expensive, possibly even a little bit more expensive.
I got you. And Ms. Fang, if you could address the issue with my remaining time on the data and what has been shown to happen to minority populations in other jurisdictions where they have adopted this type of voting? Thank you.
The nice thing is that we are not doing this entirely out of the blue. There are other jurisdictions that use vote-by-mail and major cities like Denver that have implemented vote-by-mail with neighborhood voting centers as a complement in order to address the various kinds of questions that our city council members have been asking. They know that voters, some voters like to go to polling sites in order to receive assistance because they like the tradition of walking through the fallen leaves and casting a ballot or because it's just a tradition that they have been grown up with. What we know in Denver is, we looked specifically at precincts that had high minority populations. And we know in Denver, citywide voter turnout actually increased as a result of people automatically receiving a ballot that they could vote on and then mail back. What we also know is that in those precincts with high minority populations, both Latinos and African-Americans, that those precincts not only had an increase in the voter turnout, but their relative increase was greater than the rest of the city, citywide. And what that means is that, it tells us that if, given the choice, an easy choice where voters don't have to first receive a sample ballot, fill out a request for a vote-by-mail ballot, send it in, then receive the vote-by-mail ballot, and then vote, if it's a single step where it's just arriving at their doorstep at the same time as a sample ballot, that voters are much more likely to use it and that minority voters are warm to the idea because they like not having to go on a Tuesday, cut out time from dropping off their kids or doing the double shift and be able to cast a ballot on a day of their convenience by simply mailing it back. So we're looking at other jurisdictions, and I think that a lot of the changes that have been made to make sure that our minority communities and low voter turnout communities are accommodated, I think that this motion encompasses that and takes the lessons learned from Denver and incorporates those.
Mr. Labange?
Hi, I just want to ask a question. Anyone talk to any political consultants at this table? Ask them their opinion?
They don't want higher voter turnout.
No, then let them say that. I'm asking the table, though, the official clerks. Did you ask or inquire?
No.
Okay, so I think it's worthy to ask and inquire, ask some academician at Northridge or at UCLA or SC or somewhere. Also, I got this turned out here. The last high percentage of votes was in 1993 when Mr. Bradley completed his last term and it was the open citywide election, were anywhere from 40 to 50 percent. What is our goal in this year? What is our goal in increasing? Is there a goal that we've established, Mr. Weisar?
26 percent is the average increase.
So our goal now, what is it? What was my special election in 2001? God bless John Farrar, and he's rested in heaven. But do we know what? Because this is not on special. See, this is, this is on general and primary. So I think those facts are real important because I sometimes think specials are more special and they get people interested maybe in all that deal. And the other thing I wanted to ask the clerks too, if you could answer this here, should we ask LA Community College District to go to the county? Should we ask LA Unified to go to the county? And should we not run their elections? Would that help reduce our cost? Because some of their districts are buffered both in the city and out. Carson votes at LA Unified. Bell votes at LA Unified. What's the thought of that?
For the Los Angeles Unified School District, our charter, the state constitution provides that our charter governs their elections. Any changes to their elections have to be approved by their electorate as our charter changes have to be provided.
I know, but could we ask that maybe that the county does it to reduce Jane Lagman's cost as city clerk? I'm just throwing that out. Does that make any sense? And I know there's been some discussion, and I don't know if our city attorney, who sits up there distinguishedly at the head, that I could ask this question here. What if all these elections were consolidated on the one ballot? We would feel that would, the federal ballot, which is next Tuesday, and this municipal ballot. What I've often heard is it's too long of a ballot in this issue. Is that something that you've heard as professionals?
Is it related to vote-by-mail?
Yes, because the United States Post Office is a federal agency and there's a federal election on Tuesday, therefore I think it relates to that.
Miracle, I'm very excited.
Thank you very much, Janice.
Currently, this is the type of ballots that both the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles uses. They wouldn't fit.
Wouldn't fit. So there's good to have a split on that. But I think we should see what, and whether it's voting advocates as well as voting consultants or election consultants have a discussion to get all these ideas because I think it's real important to have all the ideas at the table. And I would like to know what the number was in 2001.
In 2001, you want to know...
On the special?
In the 2001 special, you want to know percentages or you want to know totals?
How many people, percentage voted? That's the last special that I knew before your special. Yours was more special.
Voter turnout at the runoff was six...
Sixteen?
Sixteen percent at the runoff.
And what was the first?
Eighteen percent.
Eighteen percent, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Kokorian?
It just occurred to me, I'd like to understand better how this proposal would affect the city's compliance with HAVA and, in particular, its need to utilize alternative voting mechanisms. For example, what are we currently doing in terms of electronic voting in polling places? Would this impact on our obligations in some way there? I assume that we would have fewer, we have the need to utilize fewer electronic polling stations because we'd be doing those only in the neighborhood voting centers, but are there any concerns that this presents with regard to voters with disabilities or language restrictions?
Generally, some public provisions apply to city elections and some are only for federal elections. The ones that apply to city elections that you're mentioning require a voting system in each polling place that allows blind or disabled voter to vote, and that would still be the case, I think, in this system where there would be polling places and the neighborhood voting centers would house that type of equipment to allow disabled and other voters that fall under HAVA to vote with those types of equipments there. So we would still comply with HAVA at our polling places.
But if those voters are receiving ballots in the mail, and would the systems be in place in the voting centers to be able to accommodate those actual, you know, the actual voting process even though they've already received a ballot?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then they would just surrender the ballot that they had, that they had received in the mail and then vote electronically?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weisar to close, I think.
One quick question, wait, hold on.
Mr. Labange, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Weisar's got the floor.
I got the floor. You want to ask a quick question, Mr. Labange?
You said only eighteen and sixteen, but over here we have another number from the clerk that said it was 32 percent voter in the special.
For CD4.
For CD4, 32 percent. On a special, that was 32 percent. Okay, we got that. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to motion that we continue this to Friday. I think there is some information we hope we can get about...
That was vote-by-mail.
One of the major concerns for some of my colleagues, which is, you know, the tradition of going to your polling places. The way this is worded now, we would continue that, but eventually, given, hopefully that more people vote by mail, we wouldn't need as many polling places, so we start scaling down. But in this event, I'd like to know, if we could just crunch some numbers, and we'll work with the clerks off the CEO and CLA to come back on Friday, what is that cost if we continue the same amount of polling places with the vote-by-mail, full vote-by-mail, and hopefully come back on Friday, get that information to see what...
In a single district?
In a single district. Because you don't have that information right now, right? Yeah.
I have it for citywide, I don't have it for some of the...
You have it for citywide, but not a single... So I'd like...
We did do, the neighborhood voting centers on a break-even cost, and that was using this council district two election, and we determined that there would be, we would be able to have 67 neighborhood voting centers to break even in cost.
Out of typical 100, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Weisar, we have eight additional items. Do you want to continue 11, 12, and 13?
Well, you know, I'd like to because...
You'd like to continue all three? We can do that.
If we could continue 12, but we do need to have a little more discussion on 13, just if we could discuss that.
So you want 11, you want continued and 12?
Yeah, 11 and 12, we could continue. We've talked about 12 a number of times, but 13 and lifting the cap, if there's any questions or concerns or somebody just give a quick presentation to see what exactly that is and then come back on Friday, that's fine.
Okay, so...
Let's continue 11, 12.
11, 12 without opposition, continue till Friday?
Yeah.
Thank you, colleagues. Mr. Parks, you have your button pressed? Mr. Parks?
One question we asked in Budget and Finance is whether there was a dollar figure if the, on the, what is it? The funding was expanded for citywide offices beyond the $1 million. And we're talking about the cap, because we have a $1 million cap on...
I think they're going to take up...
No, 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 I'm talking about, we know the dollar value of, okay, I'm seeing, okay, wrong group.
Mr. Parks, that's 13, I think.
Okay. 11 and 12.
So, Mr. Weisar, on 11 and 12, we continue till Friday?
Yes, please.
Without opposition, 11, 12, continue till Friday. And number 13, Mr. Weisar, your direction?
Public comment, and if we could get a quick presentation on that, and if there's any questions, then we'd be happy to come back on Friday on that one.
All right, so number 13, we'll take public comment, number 13. William Forthman, William Forthman, followed by Robin Gilbert.
I'm from Porter Ranch, and I'm on the board of the Clean Money Campaign, and I'm hoping that Councilman Weisar's and Corsetti's program will be experimented with. And if you do adopt a more efficient and more voter-friendly electoral system, I would hope that some of the savings from that could be added to the voter matching funds fund. Los Angeles pioneered that in California, it's now been imitated by a number of other constituencies, and I think that it'd be good if savings from a more efficient voting system could be used to enlarge the voting fund. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robin Gilbert.
Yes, hi. Since 2004, I have been the coordinator of volunteers in the San Fernando Valley in support of California Clean Money Campaign activities to educate the public on and build support for full public funding of campaigns. Our volunteers and myself, we get a lot of support out there when we talk to neighborhood councils, church groups, PTAs, and other organizations. It is very well, they like this idea of public funding of campaigns. The voters chose the current system of partial funding, and I encourage you to support the removing of the cap that is now on the trust fund for this system and in, so that we can make it a more robust system and possibly expand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby Draggert?
I live in downtown Los Angeles, and I've been advocating public funding for a long time. Some of you have seen me here before. But this particular measure of raising the cap on the matching funds in Los Angeles, I think, is really important to do because if a candidate doesn't have sufficient funds, they won't be able to utilize the matching funds and therefore bypass the public or the private funding that's prevalent now in our politics, which I think is probably threatening our democracy more and more each day. I really applaud the city council for bringing forth some innovative thinking. I think when people see politicians, elected officials, doing some bold, making some bold changes, doing something different, trying to improve things rather than just staying with the same old failed policies, they will see an increase in voter participation. And I'm pretty excited about the voters, what is it, pledge, voters' rights, the bill that you, the three, anyway, whatever it's called, Voters' Bill of Rights, yeah. I think that might get people interested in politics again, and if they can feel like they have a voice rather than big money owning the politicians right now, that might be a good start toward improving our democracy. Thank you.
David Holtzman?
Councilmembers, David Holtzman, President of League of Women Voters of Los Angeles. I will defer to the other activists on this particular piece of the package, but just to let you know that the League of Women Voters has been a longstanding and strong supporter of publicly financed campaigns. My speaker card was actually put in for item 12, the instant runoff voting, ranked choice voting piece, which has been continued, and I look forward to speaking to the council and to let you know the story on that when the time comes. Thank you, Mr. President, Acting President.
David, you're right. You slipped into the wrong box. Dorothy Boeberry? And Dave, we're going to put you back in under 12 so you can come back on Friday.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'm Dorothy Boebert, a homeowner in Los Angeles for 58 years, past president of the Northridge Civic Association, and recently active in organizing the Northridge Neighborhood Councils. And I've also been a Realtor in the valley for 21 years and now retired. I have watched the council over the years and have been, and have become convinced that there is too much special interest money spent in all levels of politics, and I feel that dialing for dollars takes too much of your time. I support the partial public funding of campaigns, but I'm looking forward to your removing the cap on private financing so that policy is based on votes, not money. I will appreciate your yes vote on this issue. Thank you, and especially thank you for listening to all the public comments.
Fill out on 12 and 13, I'll call you for 13, Trent Lang, and then we'll put you back in the box for 12 for Friday.
Hello, Trent Lang, President of the California Clean Money Campaign. I'd like to thank the council and Councilmen Weisar, Corsetti, and Corretts for bringing this forward. I think that the election, the huge... I think that the election, the huge amounts of money that we're seeing in this election, a recent study showed that over two billion dollars is likely to be spent in the current congressional campaigns, shows how we really have to address this problem. The voters of Los Angeles passed the partial public financing system in nineteen ninety. It's been working reasonably well. Senator, I forgot about more studies, found that it increased the number of grassroots candidates. I know most, most of you actually use the system. It increased the importance of small individual contributions over corporate and large contributions. So it's had very positive effects, but it needs to be fixed. It needs to be tweaked. It's a twenty-year-old system, and these changes to the charter would start to do that, removing the cap on the public financing system so that we make sure that we have enough funds when we have a very highly contested election like the upcoming two thousand and thirteen elections with open mayoral seats. It's likely to be very expensive. There's a question of whether or not this is going to cost the city money, because currently the charter actually allocates three million dollars a year that the voters ask for. Raising the cap would make sure that that money stays, stays into the system. Now, this, the vast majority of the time, the money does stay in the system because it's used. It's only been two or three times that any funds have gone back to the general fund. So this, this would delay it for a year. It shouldn't have too much cost, but allow the flexibility to expand it later, and those funds will be allocated anyways as per the charter. So these changes would help us fix and improve the system. We look forward to working with ordinance to make the system even better and stronger and help fulfill the will of voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Jo Sededa. Sodida. Say Dita. And you are our last speaker on this matter, ma'am?
Well, I'd like to start by thanking Councilman Weisar. This is very motivating and helps us regain some optimism. My name is Jo Sedeta. I'm chairman and co-founder of California Clean Money. We've been working on this for years and is still needed, but I was delighted that LA County had passed in LA, in LA City, and so I thank all of you who voted for it. But we're still working on that, and this is a very good, a very good way to go forward. And I urge you, I guess I beg you, to vote and get it on the ballot. And just one word about the vote by mail becoming the citywide thing. I think it's a great opportunity, a family opportunity that nobody mentioned. My family, when it gets together, fifteen people, and next January, they all will be able to vote, and it's a good way to talk and entertain and, and discuss with them, and it's, it's a good family value, so I hope that that will become a reality also. So thank you very much for all of you, and we really hope that you will help push this forward by getting the, on the ballot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weisar, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, and colleagues, again, I wanted to continue this one as well to take up all the items on Friday, but I did think it was worthwhile bringing it up today so that everyone could kind of hear it out, see what it is, ask any questions, and then come back on Friday again. What this really does is a first, but very important step in moving towards more fully-funded, publicly-financed campaigns for the city of Los Angeles. What we have right now is not really getting the impact that we would like, so that we rely less on fundraising and, and, and taking more public, public financing when we operate our campaigns. What this does is, as was mentioned, every year, by charter, the general fund puts in three million dollars to this fund. The cap is at twelve million dollars. If we are going to move more towards a more robust public financing of campaigns, we need more money in there, and we anticipate that with the mayoral election coming up and that that fund will be diminished somewhat. The lax mayoral election, I was told about six to eight million dollars were used, so we see, do see this fund diminishing. I know there's some concern about lifting the cap and putting more money into this. I think we could work out a system that, that allows for us to, to be aware of some tough financial times and how we will be able to not impact the general fund as much, but hopefully by Friday, we could work on that and come up with some language to that effect, if that is one of the main concerns here. So, colleagues, if you believe in public financing of campaigns, this is the first but very important step. If we are ever going to move in that direction, we have to take this initial step first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Labange?
I strongly support the recommendation of the League of Women Voters, and I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Alakon?
Councilmembers, I, I, I believe in the matching funds program, but I think it does, I, I believe that rather than just unilaterally increasing the dollar amount invested in the voter matching funds, I actually think we should shift money, because too much money is put, too much matching fund money is put into the mayor's office than, as compared to all the other offices. So, for example, in the primary election, the mayor's matching funds are six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So for a candidate to get six hundred and seventy, sixty-seven thousand dollars, they would have to raise about a million dollars, because you, you get five hundred dollars, and it has to be only the personal money, so excluding all the business money, all the lobbyist arranged money, just the personal money, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. If you can raise six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, then you probably don't need matching funds. And so I think the cap on the mayor's office, and then in the general election, it's eight hundred thousand dollars. So I, I think we need to cut that in half and, or, or more, because I don't think, you know, to run a legitimate campaign in the mayor's race, you might need a million dollars, but this six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, you already have a million dollars. And I think, I think that we can spread the, the dollars saved by reducing the cap on the mayor's race to the other council races and have the same effect of expanding the budget without increasing the total amount. So I think that's a different way to go, and I, I offer, I haven't studied this, I'm responding to Mr. Weisar's motion. It's been a concern of mine since I ran for the mayor's race, and, and the two prominent candidates maxed out, and nobody else could, and so it took away the effect of, you know, the idea of matching funds was to, to take away the power of incumbency, and in fact, I believe our matching fund system for the mayor's office in particular contributes to the incumbency factor. So, so I, I think that's a different way that should be analyzed. There we go. In terms of the council office, the city attorney, by the way, by comparison, is, in the primary for city attorney is three hundred thousand. We might want to lower that a little bit. The controller is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. We might want to lower that a little bit. In the council offices, it's one hundred thousand. I don't, I don't have a, a great concern about that, because you'd probably have to raise about a hundred and fifty to get a hundred, that hundred thousand, which means you've got two hundred and fifty thousand, which is about a decent campaign in the council district office. So I don't have a problem with the council offices, but on the citywide elections, I think all we're doing is padding the coffers of incumbents. So I, I think we should look at the caps as opposed to raising the entire dollar amount at this particular time with, given our, our really tough economy.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Weisar, our final speaker on this matter?
I have a low bar, right. Thank you very much, and, and those are some very good issues that Ms. Alakon raises, and that's precisely why we've got to lift the cap, because as part of this motion is that, that those are issues that are in the ordinance, not the charter, the ordinance. So what we want to do is lift the cap, know that we have the ability to even play with the formulas, because if we don't have the ability within the charter to play with the formulas, we can't even get to the ordinance and the questions that Ms. Alakon, well, we could change them at the same time, but we're looking at this as a sequential step. Let's make sure that the voters approve that we're lifting the cap, and then we'll deal with the ordinance and make sure that we have that authority. That's kind of like the second step that we're talking about, but those are precisely why we want to move forward, because we do think there are some changes and some updates to make. So thank you, and I look forward to discussing this on, on Friday, and I appreciate everybody's comments. I think they're very good ones, and I, I hope we can get there so that we can continue finding ways to increase voter participation and confidence in our voting procedures and elections in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Eleven, twelve, and thirteen, without opposition, continue till Friday. That will be the direction. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number one. It is a PCN in council, council district fourteen that is noted for a public hearing. A recommendation is required to grant or deny the application.
Mr. Weisar, two cards. John Walsh. Number one, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. One million successful server requests a year, and of course, you can email us with your documents at Hollywood Dems at gmail dot com, and you can watch us, listen to us on, or see us on Twitter at Hollywood Dems. You know, why don't we have a cap on alcohol? There seems to be an unending desire of you to add more and more convenience to alcohol. We just talked about how far you have to travel to vote. You can travel no more than a hundred feet in Hollywood, and now it's like the whole city to drink, to buy alcohol, 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 alcohol. It's a poison, just like dope is a poison. HollywoodHighlands dot org. You're going to vote it.
Elizabeth Peterson.
Council President, Council Members, Elizabeth Peterson, applicant's representative. The Chapman Market has been almost two years in coming to fruition. It is located at two twenty-one West Eighth Street on the corner of Broadway and Eighth. This building went through a five-year restoration and now has a hundred and sixty-eight residential units above, fully occupied. The market was approved under ZA two thousand and nine nine four CUB CUX, with full support of the Central Division Police Department, Councilmember Weisar's office, Dee Lang, and many of the residents of the building were present to show their support of the gourmet shop. This is a nine hundred and twenty-five square foot gourmet shop. Only sixty feet are dedicated to alcohol sales. That is less than six percent of the floor area. The Chapman Market has been open for two months. Zoning Administrator Zeitzewski approved the use and coordinated fourteen volunteered conditions for alcohol service that would ensure appropriate sales and service and consumption of the alcohol. It's for beer and wine only, and the sales of alcohol are limited from ten AM to eleven PM. This is a historic monument, LA nine ninety-nine, built in nineteen eleven. It was restored, over thirty million dollars dedicated to the project. As Councilmember Weisar, Jessica Weddington-McLean stated that the ZA hearing, that support of this is accurate to the Bring Back Broadway initiative and is very important to the revitalization of this corner of Eighth and Broadway. We feel the use was vetted extensively, and the owners developed the business model based on major input from the Central Area Police Department, the Downtown Neighborhood Council, Councilmember Weisar, and the numerous residents of the building. The added amenity once again is only six percent of the sales of alcohol on the floor, the neighborhood, and makes this business more viable. The business will assist in making Eighth and Broadway light, bright, and safe, also activating the nighttime streetscape, so we appreciate.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weisar, a motion on this matter is required.
It's, there's no motion required, right? It's to adopt the report, and I think there has to be a technical correction on the agenda. That says CD nine, it's actually CD fourteen. Okay, and so I think we just adopt the report. Is that accurate?
Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, direction? Mr. City Attorney?
A motion is required either to grant or to deny.
Mr. Weisar, I told you, motion's required.
To adopt the, can we continue this to Friday, please? Let's continue this to Friday.
The motion would be approved or denied application, sir.
We were caught off guard because it said CD nine, and we weren't aware that this item was coming up in our district today, because the agenda said CD nine, so if we could continue this to Friday, we appreciate it. Thank you.
With that consideration, it will be continued till Friday. Next item, please.
Item number two.
Number two. No cards. Well, you know what? We're going to approve it. So recommendation for approval on number two? Mr. Corsetti?
I just want to thank Councilmember Zion for his incredible leadership on this.
Thank you, Mr. Corsetti.
Although I know it's also in council district twelve, so it might have been mostly Mr. Smith, but you gave it that added push.
Thank you very much. I'm helping him out. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Very well. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number nineteen, called special for cards.
Number nineteen, John Walsh. Number nineteen, Mr. Walsh, is our only public speaker on the matter. Mr. Jay Verata, go back to work.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands dot org. As you know, the city is, is bankrupt, is not bankrupt, it's on the edge of bankruptcy. And what are we spending here? Funding for services in connection with the Woodcraft Ranger reception. We are paying money for canapes. We're paying money for coal cuts. We're paying money for coffee, for the Woodcraft Rangers special, District Nine reception at City Hall Tom Bradley Room. Let us have a moratorium on all these receptions. The money adds up tens of thousands of dollars for your munchies, and if Proposition Nineteen passes, the dope, everybody's munchies level will increase. The appetite for munchies, no more munchies. HollywoodHighlands dot org.
All right, that matter is before us. Colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Mr. Alakon?
Yeah, Mr. Walsh, I just, I just want to come to the defense of the Woodcraft Rangers. I mean, how could anybody be opposed to supporting a reception for the Woodcraft Rangers? I mean.
American is apple pie, Mr. Alakon.
Well, I, I wouldn't put it that way, since this is the most diverse city in, in the country, but this is, this is an organization that does a lot of good. I have a program in my district, and, and they do good work, and, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure Ms. Perry feels the same way about her Woodcraft Rangers.
All right. Thank you. Open the roll on this matter, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Whoever.
Twelve ayes.
Very well. Next item, please.
Item number twenty, called special for cards.
Number twenty. On number twenty, we have Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams, Dr. Williams has left the building. John Walsh. John Walsh, you have one minute, sir.
Well, you have fifty-eight.
That'll use your time for the day.
It says fifty-eight seconds. You owe me two minutes. You owe me one minute.
Oh, it says one minute right now.
Thank you. You have to fight. I just like this again. You are spending millions of dollars to upgrade the bus maintenance facility, that's for your bus system, while you cut the service for the bus system. I'm telling you, I'm not against the Woodcraft Rangers, because in a city where people are starving on the street, no free meals for anybody. No free meals for anybody. Come to my website, come to HollywoodHighlands dot org and find out what's happening. First, it was only about what was happening, you had to find out here in the city. Now for the state, find out everything. HollywoodHighlands dot org. Keep your twenty seconds.
Arnold Sachs.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. I was just curious, because I know that the MTA will be considering funding for a new bus facilities right across the street from their headquarters. So what, was there any kind of concern or thinking along the lines of, well, if the MTA is considering a new bus facilities in downtown LA, right across from where their headquarters are located, maybe we could piggyback with them, save the million nine, and have a combined bus facilities that would be able to entertain the work needed for both the MTA buses for that one particular division? the MTA buses for that one particular division and the buses that are used for the L.A. DOT. I know that that's a far-reaching idea, and it would have saved a million bucks, but nevertheless, a good thought. Thank you.
All right, that matter is before us, colleagues. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item 23, called Special for Cards.
Number 23. Item number 23, John Walsh, he's out of time. That matter is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, would you like to reset, or excuse me, would you like to recess to closed session? Or we could recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Let's do the special. Go into the special meeting, Mr. Clerk. Hit that button so we can hear you.
Hello, Cardinal Carter, Weisar Caress, Cricory and Labonte's Parks Prairie Ray, Rosenthal Smith, Weston Zion, Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. On the special agenda, item 28 is an item which a public hearing has been held.
On number 28, public hearing has been held. There are cards on this matter. If anyone wishes to open. Public meeting has been held, there's no recommendation to open, so on that matter, no one on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please. Is your speaker not working? Are your foot's not working?
Item 29 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Number 29, Arnold Sacks. And John Walsh is out of time, so we'll hear from Arnold Sacks.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Walsh would get another minute for a special meeting, but he's already left. And nevertheless, the elusive Quimby fees that will be generated by these projects, we had a recall or a recount or idea of just how much again in Quimby fees are stashed away somewhere in some part of the city vault, not being touched, not being used, just for the benefit of the public's sake, it would be clarifying for, just to know. Thank you.
On this matter, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that concludes the special meeting. Would you like to take up item number 27?
Number 27. Mr. City Attorney on number 27?
Sir, pardon me, would you like to first adjourn the special meeting?
Yes.
And subsequently return to the regular agenda and take up item number 27?
Yes, and then we have a closed session item. Mr. City Attorney? Number 27, it's scheduled for closed session if there's a motion, colleagues, or we will go into closed session for a briefing. Mr. Garcetti? Close the...
It's the discretion of the chair. Just do it.
All right, we will go into closed session. All right. Sergeant Arms, we have one item on the closed session.
Hey, buddy. Excuse me, sir. Ever hear of Navigate L.A.? How would you like to have access to maps, mailing lists, sewer connections, construction permits, neighborhood councils, and much more? Sure. Step right on in. Are you ready? Uh, sure, I guess. Been welcome to Navigate L.A.
All right, we're back in session. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, there is a recommendation for payment of judgment and order on attorney's fees and costs in the amount of $816,828.58 in the case entitled Brendan Collins versus City of Los Angeles.
On that matter, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Forthwith, for the city attorney's office. All right, colleagues, that completes our agenda. Announcements? Any announcements today? Mr. Rosenthal?
Just that Transportation Committee that is scheduled for 2 o'clock will start at 2:15.
2:15 for Transportation. Mr. Parks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements. One, inviting the public to a Eighth District meeting Friday, October 29, 6 to 8 p.m. at the Expo Center on Menlo and King Boulevard. And also for those members of the community that's following the construction of the Crenshaw-LAX Transit Corridor, they will have several meetings, but the next two meetings dealing with station alignment will be Thursday, October 28, regarding the Florence and West Boulevard Station. It will happen at the Inglewood City Hall in the Community Room at One West Manchester at 6 to 8 p.m. And also on Thursday, November 4, they'll be dealing with the Crenshaw MLK Station, and that will be at the DWP Headquarters on 4030 Crenshaw between 6 and 8 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti?
I mean, congratulating our colleague, Tom Labonte, who tomorrow, here in the Rotunda, tomorrow evening, from 5:30 to 7:30, will be honored as the Local Legislator of the Year by UCLA. Congratulations, Tom, and well deserved.
Congratulations, Tom Labonte. You can give your speech tomorrow, Tom. It's okay, give a speech tomorrow. Any other announcements, colleagues? Journey motions?
Mr. President, before then, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred?
There is an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Carter request a big excuse on November 2 for personal business. That meets council policy.
That's approved.
The desk is clear.
Okay, colleagues, journey motions, anyone? Please stand. Journey motions, Mr. Labonte, a journey motion. Everyone in the audience, please stand.
Members, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Teresa Fuentes. She's the mother of Chuck Fuentes, who was a deputy to Mr. Ahm when he's the city attorney's office, a sixth-generation Californian, and she passed away recently, but she lived a full life, 86 years old. Also, I ask for adjournment memory of Martha Jean Magg, who is a wonderful woman, much loved by many of her families and friends. She came from a family of 11. She was 81 years old. She survived by her children, as well as two of her sisters, including Sister Jenny, it's Sister Jenny's sister died. So I hope you could join me on that, Mr. Weisar. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte. Journey motions, colleagues? A journey motion for Los Angeles Police Officer 2 Joshua James Collins, serial 39542, passed away Tuesday, October 19, in Afghanistan. Born March 25, 82, in Thousand Oaks, appointed to the department in July of 2008, last assigned to Central Area. Survived by his father, James, stepmother Barbara, brothers Donovan and Cooper. Visitation is Tuesday, November 2, from 2 till 8, Police Administration Building, the Deaton Auditorium, 100 West First Street, across from City Hall. And the services will be Wednesday, November 3, at 9:30, the Cathedral of Lady of the Angels, 555 West Temple Street. Immediately following, there'll be an interment in West Lake Village. I understand the council is going to start late on that day. Mr. Garcetti?
Folks, so please, after the funeral is over, please come down here, and we'll start at noon next Wednesday.
So next Wednesday, council... Next Wednesday, council will start at noon. Councilmembers will be attending the services for Officer Collins, who passed away in Afghanistan. May he rest in peace. All members on this adjourn in motion. Colleagues, that completes this. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.